Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Carey, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall once again. There are now eight members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Sikowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. We do need ten members for a quorum, but prior to officially convening the meeting of the city council, as is customary, on Fridays we do allow time for presentations and other special tributes. So we can begin with that and officially call the roll when the quorum is present. So we'll begin with today's presentation, and I see we have some very special guests already lined up at our microphone from the Los Angeles Police Department. I'll turn it over to you first.
We can do this with music first. Good morning. My name is Sergeant Bruce Bogstedt. I'm the manager of the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band. Today with me I have Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie, Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna, and Kyle Lumston. They'd like to play a tune for you now.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation. Because we have a pinch hitter here, Mr. Garcetti.
We're actually going to honor the pipe band if they'll come forward first. For those of you who attended or who watched Sunday's candlelight vigil here at City Hall, one of the most moving parts of it was our very own Los Angeles Police Pipe Band, who played so beautifully during the riderless horse part of the ceremony. But for those of you who may not have been exposed to the pipe band before that time, let me tell you a couple things about them. We have one of the best pipe bands in the country here. This year marked the band's return to the competitive arena. It won a total of six first-place trophies and completely swept its division at all major California Highland Games: Costa Mesa, San Diego, and Pleasanton. This is the first time and single-best season record ever in the band's history. So first it was the Sparks, now it's the Pipe Band. Financial support for band activities comes exclusively from private donations. Neither the city nor the department contributes to the band's expenses. They're completely self-sufficient. Today, we are going to be presenting a few certificates, but a couple other things about the pipe band. They're composed entirely of civilian volunteers. They play under Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie and Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna, and they've played together as a unit for only five months, which makes those victories, I think, all the more impressive. The band's musical skills weren't the only thing in a recent competition that had the people cheering. Their kilts, and I direct everybody's attention to the beautiful kilts here modeled by our players, are woven in the new Los Angeles Police Pipe Band tartan. Now, they drew spectator applause just simply for their beauty. First introduced by a band contingent appearing at Parker Center memorial services, the tartan features the deep blue of the LAPD overlaid with intersecting stripes of red, gold, and green from our very own flag of the city of Los Angeles. And as the official pipe band of the city of Los Angeles, they represent not only the department, but the city whenever they perform. So it's my pleasure today to give, first, a resolution to the pipe band in honor of the recent victories, which will be accepted today by Sergeant Bruce Bogstedt. And some individual certificates, first for Pipe Major Steve McGarrettie. For Pipe Sergeant Charles Lumston, and his son Kyle will be accepting today. For Pipe Sergeant Charles Lumston, and his son Kyle will be accepting today. And Drum Sergeant Callum Hanna. And in a bit of a surprise, we also have a special certificate for Sergeant Bruce Bogstad himself, the manager. If I can just briefly the resolution or a piece of the resolution. Sergeant Bogstad, with perseverance in the face of many obstacles and unwavering dedication, has always strived to follow the Pipe Band's stated mission of representing through music both the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles at local, state, national, and international venues. And whereas under Sergeant Bogstad's leadership and guidance, the reorganization and rebuilding of the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band and the Los Angeles Police Band Activities, Inc., have yielded exceptional and outstanding results in both the Pipe Band's musical achievements and its ability to project a positive public image on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles. And whereas Sergeant Bogstad has given freely and generously of his personal resources and time, without thought of compensation or reward, in pursuit of this goal, which has helped to ensure that the Los Angeles Police Pipe Band continues to represent the highest traditions of the Los Angeles Police Department and the City of Los Angeles, we present this resolution to you.
Now we're ready for a speech.
Not very often police officers get a loss of words. I just want to say that it's been a long uphill battle to get this band going. The Los Angeles Police Pipe Band has been in existence for over twenty years, but this band has been working only together for five months. There's four grades in world competition, one through four, one being obviously the best. We're currently ranked as a Grade Two band. The only way you can move up is to go to Scotland to the World Games in Glasgow. Next year, we're going to try to go, if we can raise enough money, to represent the City of Los Angeles and the Police Department, and hopefully move into Grade One and be the first Grade One Police Pipe Band in the entire United States. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Commander Betty Calhoun, commanding officer of Personnel Group. I'm here on behalf of Chief Parks and all the women and men of the Los Angeles Police Department who are so very proud and honored to have this Pipe Band with us. One of the things that we live with as police officers is that often we have funerals for our officers, and these individuals play at our funerals. And I recall something one person said, a sergeant on the job, who said that his child was watching the funeral of an officer, and then later heard a Pipe Band playing Amazing Grace, and the child said, Daddy, there's your song. And the sad thing about it is, we hear them mostly when we're burying a police officer. But we should remember that when they're playing the reels, they also can bring our spirits up, and that's what they do for us in the Los Angeles Police Department. And so I'm very proud and honored to be here to congratulate them for their victories in the Highland Games and also for their wonderful job they do for all of us in the city every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and congratulations to all the success of the Pipe Band. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, we call your attention to our very, very special guest in our midst today. He is none other than the Honorable Terry J. Hatter, a familiar name and face to many of you. Judge Hatter has been the chief United States District Judge of the Central Division District of California since March of 1988. Some of you will know and appreciate it as the largest federal district in the nation, serving some seventeen million people. Judge Hatter was appointed to the United States District Court in 1979 and has created a distinguished career over that twenty-two-year period. Yesterday, Judge Hatter passed the gavel, as they say, and stepped down from his post as chief judge of the Central District of California. But the good news is that he will continue to serve as a trial judge for the foreseeable future and continue to distinguish himself as one of the nation's greatest legal minds. Judge Hatter received his undergraduate degree in government from Wesleyan University in Connecticut, went on to pursue his law degree, and completed that at the University of Chicago School of Law. One of his most memorable and distinguishable contributions from his post was that of serving as the overseer in the implementation of the consent decree for the Metropolitan Transportation Authority in 1996. And many of us took close note of his stellar work in that regard. A difficult task, but it must be said that he handled that fairly, even-handedly, and admirably. He is intimately familiar with Los Angeles City Government, having served under then-mayor Tom Bradley as executive assistant and director of the Criminal Justice and Planning, and later as special assistant to the mayor and director of urban development. But his career extended well beyond the walls, has extended well beyond the walls of his courtroom and local government. Judge Hatter has made a career of being involved in various community activities concerning legal services and education. Currently, he chairs the Board of Counselors of the University of Southern California Law School, Law Center, rather. He is a member of the Board of the Western Justice Center Foundation, member of both the Board of Overseers of the Rand Institute for Civil Justice and the Board of Trustees at Mount St. Mary's College. Additionally, Judge Hatter is a member of the Pacific Council on International Policy. He has been chairman of the California Advisory Commission on Legal Services Corporation, a board member of several other institutions, not the least of which is Richmond, California Unified School District, a trustee at Wesleyan University, and visiting, a member of the Visiting Committee at the University of Chicago Law School. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a distinguished member of our community with us today, and I'm very pleased to present him this presentation on our behalf and to thank you, Your Honor, for serving our community as well as you have over these many years, having distinguished yourself and by so doing distinguishing us, and we look forward to your continued service over the years to come. Members of the council, the Honorable Judge Terry Hatter.
Your Honor, before speaking, at least one of my colleagues who also wishes to say a few words to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is such a tremendous honor for me personally to be here today as the city honors Judge Hatter, because I served as an assistant United States Attorney across the street and appeared in front of Judge Hatter on countless occasions. I never had a trial in front of Your Honor, but I had many other matters in front of you, and it was always, it was more than a delight. It was really a true honor to appear in your courtroom, because your courtroom, amongst all the courtrooms across the street, really stands alone when it comes to dignity and respect and a proper appreciation for what it is to be in a United States court. And it started, you know, it's not just the manner in which you conduct yourself on the bench and the manner in which you issue your rulings, but just the way in which you control your courtroom. And I have to tell you, Your Honor, that it's been an adjustment for me over here. I think there are some gum chewers out there right now, and they couldn't get away with that on the Spring Street side across the street. I also have always admired your courage as a jurist, and my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, correctly points out your seminal role, the role you continue to play in the MTA matter, a matter which I will never forget, is your courage in the matter of, I believe it was the Navy employee, was it Keith Minehold? Is that the correct name? At a time in the early 1990s, when the military was so intransigent, as unfortunately, in many respects it still is today, in the area of homosexual rights, you issued that pathbreaking decision that really, really brought national focus to such an important issue, and it took a lot of courage to do that. As someone who greatly appreciated all the courtesies you extended me over the years, it's a real tremendous privilege for me to see you honored today, Judge Hatter. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
Your Honor.
Mr. President, members of the council, and Chief Administrative Officer Ron Deaton, who's a good friend with whom I work continuously on matters that are appropriate both to our court and to our city. Could I first of all introduce some of my staff who are here with me? Betty Escobar, my longtime secretary, who was with me at Superior Court, has been with me for twenty-two years at this report. Next, my administrative law clerk, Sonia Augustine. My senior law clerk, Richard Smith. And a student law clerk, we call them externes, Patrick Avigan. A judge is only as good as his or her staff, as you know. But I particularly want to thank Councilman Ridley Thomas, who is a dear friend, and also Councilman Jack Weiss. And I told him I was so delighted to see him here. And I see now the only person that I ever used to see when I was over here, and he's soon to be leaving, I understand, but Joel Wax, another old and dear friend. I have a real sense of deja vu, because I used to come here and stand at this lectern and have fifteen old people dump on me, and there's only one old one left here, and he's about to go. Back when I was working with Tom Bradley, I had that distinct privilege in working with the council. And I want to thank you so very much for what you're doing for the city and for the entire community, particularly at a time of national tragedy, which I think, out of all of that agony, is going to bring us closer together as a nation. And indeed, this is the most diverse city in the history of recorded man, and we want to make sure that we have the right kind of leadership to take us into the new millennium, to go beyond acts of terrorism, to indeed bring people together, people of various religions, ethnic groups. And I know that you can do this, in spite of your agreeing to sign on to this today. I'm sure you have even better judgment to do the things that are most important for our city and for our community. I look here and I see a number of young people who I'm sure are students, and I, again, I applaud you for having the students here. It's so important that they learn the messages of a free society and understand too that judiciary is really the backbone of a free society, an independent judiciary as we have in the federal system. And I certainly urge you and your teachers to come next door, just next door, to 312 North Springs Street, to the United States Courthouse. We'd love to have you come anytime. And again, let me thank you all. I greatly appreciate this honor, and it is that. Thank you.
Mr. President, it now gives me a great degree of honor and to bring one of our premier employees on behalf of Mr. Burnson to the podium, acknowledging her retirement, the one and only Christine Heffron. Please come forward. Retiring from the position of chief of the city clerk's election division. Chris has managed the election division since 1992, implementing new, many new procedures and programs to accommodate the ever-changing election process. She has managed the second-largest election in the state of California and has been the longest-serving manager of the city's elections since Walt Peterson, who served from 1969 to 1984. Chris's last two elections, the April and June 2001 elections, were the most difficult because of the problems that developed in Florida. She and her staff created several programs to address the CHAD problem, including education for our voters and our precinct workers. She also reemphasized the city's provisional voting process to ensure that voters were not turned away from a precinct without being able to vote. Chris is retiring from the city, but she is not leaving the election field. She is moving over to the county registrar's office to manage the largest election in the state of California. We wish her the best in her new position and know that the county and the city will continue to cooperate to ensure that our voters have the best elections possible, and we do that with great admiration for her years of work. The county's gain is our loss, but we do not see it as a complete loss, as you will be within our reach. We will now hear from the city clerk for his remarks, and then we'll make the presentation to Ms. Heffron.
When you look in a phrase book and you see the phrase "out of the frying pan into the fire," there is going to be a picture of Chris Heffron right next to that. When you think she's leaving the second-largest election, she had to find 2,300 different locations to staff and hire approximately 11,000 people to conduct our elections. She's now going to a jurisdiction where she's going to get to find 5,000 different locations and hire 25,000 to 30,000 people. So I used to question her sanity a lot anyway in staying in the election division. I think there really is some question now about what she's doing. I suspect Connie wants her over there, so Connie doesn't have to take all the blame for the election process. But Chris has done an heroic job. We've shared a lot of good times, we've shared a lot of bad times, but again, this process, as I described it, is at best managed chaos, and she's come through with flying colors. Both she and I were not as gray as we are today, primarily because of the election process, but Chris has pulled together a very good staff. She's had to deal with some interesting problems over the years, and she truly is an excellent manager. Connie McCormick is getting an excellent number-two person for the election process. And Chris, I don't think she's looking forward to replacing the punch card system, but that's going to be on the radar screen fairly soon, and we'll see how that goes. Now that we have her over on the other side, I'm sure the cooperation will continue. And again, Chris, on behalf of me and the election division staff and the voters of Los Angeles, thanks for a wonderful, wonderful job.
For now, therefore, bid resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor and the city clerk, hereby commend Christine F. Heffron on thirty-two years of exemplary service for the City of Los Angeles, and extend to her and her family their very best wishes for health and happiness during your next phase of your career in public service. Chris?
Once again, you must have done such a great job. We have a couple colleagues who wish to make some remarks. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
I just want to take this moment to thank Chris.
I just want to take this moment to thank Chris. I've met her back in 1991 during the elections of the previous administration. And this last election, we all have defining moments during our experience in those heated hours at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. And who do you find but Chris, composed, knows where everything is at, where everything is supposed to be? And especially when you have a recount, and you get by it by one, actually, you gain a vote, and it was all done legitimately, you really appreciate the work, the effort that the crew in the city put together. And Chris was one of the main stewards. I just want to thank you, Chris, for all of your work and your dedication and your professional stance and your approach. And again, thank you so much.
Chris, I know that in my particular election, I received a call from you on a Saturday afternoon at 3:24 announcing that I had won that election. And I know that dealing with the office under your guidance, it was always smooth, efficient, courteous, very polite. And I wish all city departments could have the operations as you have. And I know from my colleagues' point of view, who've gone through elections, dealing with the city election division, you have been premier and paramount in giving us the comfort and the reasonableness and the understanding. And I'll never forget that Saturday afternoon when I received that final call, which made me jump 12 feet off the ground. But good wishes to you in the future. And you did a tremendous job in your 30-plus years of service to the people of Los Angeles and the elected officials of the city. God bless you. Thank you.
Ooh, wow. This city has been very good to me for 32 years, and I started out just planning on working for a couple, and the couple ended up being 32. And it has been a wonderful time, and I have learned a great deal, I have grown a great deal. And this city has treated me very well, and I've appreciated all of the opportunities for growth, all the opportunities for change. And I'm very happy that I've been able to provide something that is of lasting significance for the city, and that I've had a hand, however how small, in making sure that people are elected, they are elected fairly, and that the process has served the citizens of Los Angeles in the best way possible. I thank you very much for your kind words.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Before proceeding to the next presentation, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And now I can officially welcome everybody, not only to City Hall, but to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, September 21st, years 2001. Council meetings can also be viewed live on your cable stations, Channel 35, or via webcast on www.lacity.org. And certainly, we continue to be heard via council phone. We have a few more presentations today. I'd like to call, before the next presentation, if I can ask everybody to please rise. We're beginning a new tradition here in council meetings with a pledge of allegiance at each and every one of our council meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant. I'd like to call next Councilmember Pacheco for a presentation.
Mr. President and colleagues, I just wanted to bring up a very special young woman, or I should say, young girl, from Boyle Heights, Analisa Cassandra Mejia. And I also want to share with everyone that we don't always have to wait until someone has a long distinguished career to recognize them. Analisa is going to be participating in the People-to-People Student Ambassador Program for the 2002 summer in Australia. She is a student or graduate of Sunshine Elementary this past spring. I brought her up here to encourage not only her to continue working hard and achieving further excellence in education, but as a proven example of what our young are doing today in Boyle Heights and to inspire other young children in Boyle Heights. She graduated as one of the two finalists of the Frank Salazar Foundation Scholarship, which is a very distinguished honor. She's also received, she received the award because she wrote a speech about her love for her school, her teacher, Mr. Bryant Wheat, her successes at Sunrise Elementary, and, most important, her desire to become a doctor. She is not only talented in her studies, but she also likes to play sports and has earned great recognition for her athletic ability. I would like to congratulate Analisa Mejia for being an excellent student and for being a true role model to others. I also want to congratulate Mr. and Ms. Mejia for raising such a fine example of a young girl in our community. I'm going to turn over the microphone to Analisa, who wants to share a few words. She was a valedictorian at her elementary school, and I want her to share her speech to you that she gave to her students. So let me turn over the microphone to Analisa.
I'd like to thank the president and the councilmen, and Councilman Pacheco. I'd like to read you my speech of Sunrise Memories. It has been an honor and a great privilege to complete 5th grade at Sunrise Elementary. I would like to thank Mr. Wheat, Ms. Manrique, and the school staff for their guidance and support through this year. I have come to Sunrise Elementary for one year, but a great memorable year. I started out in Room 27 and was moved to Room 22. I had a chance to make friends in both classes. One of the great things was being with my friend Irene, who has been my friend since I was two years old. Everyone welcomed me and made me feel comfortable. This was my first year in public school, and I thought making friends and being happy would be hard. Sunrise has given me experiences that will make me a better person. One great experience was science cap in the mountains. Another great experience was our class production of cats. And the greatest experience was my teacher, Mr. Wheat. Mr. Wheat has made learning fun and exciting. His belief and view of learning makes the hard stuff easy. I know my one year at Sunrise has been a short stay, but it has helped me to be a better student. Being a better student will help me get to medical school, and I know now this dream will come alive as the years go on. Thank you.
Analisa, on behalf of my office, I want to congratulate you on doing such a fine job at Sunrise Elementary. And as I tell all of my nieces and my daughter, yes, being a doctor is probably the best profession you should pursue, and I say that as a lawyer. So, good luck, and thank you for coming by and sharing those words with us. Mr. President and colleagues, I also like to bring up Jose Montalongo Jr., one of our staffers and employees at the Youth Opportunity Movement. He was born in a small suburb in Chicago, Illinois, moved to Los Angeles with his family. I am presenting this award to him for his outstanding commitment and dedication and hard work to the East Los Angeles Youth and Family Center and to the residents of Boyle Heights. As a high school student, he mentored students, registered voters, held blood drives, and participated in community purification projects and the mural project that distinguishes Roosevelt High School with pride of its surrounding and founding environments. Prior to working with the Community Development Department in Boyle Heights, he worked with the young people in Watts through the Kulik Youth Opportunities Program. At the Kulik Youth Opportunities Program, he became the youngest community outreach coordinator in the history of the program. When the funding for this program was cut, Jose and his supervisor began a writing campaign in support of the program. Because of these letters, which reached the Secretary of the Department of Labor and our local Congresswoman, the program was able to continue and expand to what today is known to many as the Youth Opportunity Movement. Jose then returned back to Boyle Heights and went from being the East Los Angeles Youth and Family Center's Outreach Coordinator to the evening ESL teacher and continuation schools liaison. During the holiday, Jose helps distribute food and toys to over 300 families. What impresses me most about Jose is that he does everything because of the smiles and the kind words of appreciation that he receives from the residents. He tells me that this is what makes all the hard work and sacrifices worth it. He has the same motivation and drive today that he's had from his first day of work. It's people like this that really make a difference and really make our city the city of angels. I want to finish off by saying that many of his coworkers and constituents have given me great comments about Jose. He does everything with a smile and is willing to help again. I want to thank Jose for being an excellent leader and hope that he will continue with the Community Development Department for many years. We need people like him to remind us of what it means to be of service. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my office, I want to give you the certificate of appreciation to Jose Montalongo for all your great work. Thank you so much.
First of all, I want to start off by thanking the Community Development Department for giving me the opportunity to do what it is that I do. Would especially like to thank Ozzy Lopez, the East LA Youth and Family Center manager, for having the confidence and trust in me and the responsibilities of the everyday life at the East LA Youth and Family Center. Of course, I would like to thank my family and friends for all their support. And I want to accept this certificate on behalf of the entire community of Boyle Heights and East Los Angeles, for it is them who truly deserve this certificate. They're the reason why we wake up every morning and do what we do. They're the reason why we spend those extra hours at our center trying to figure out different ways to service them, not only their families, but their young people. And it, in fact, is them who wake up every morning bright and early to take our ESL courses or take our computer courses. So I want to accept this on behalf of the entire Boyle Heights community in East Los Angeles, and I want to extend thanks to the entire city council this morning on behalf of myself and the entire Boyle Heights community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski for presentation.
Just like we had a longtime employee leaving the city clerk's office with Chris Heffron, we have standing with me today Richard Hart. Rich has been, look at this. Rich obviously has a fan club, and deservedly so. Rich has worked for 30 years for the city, the majority of that time in the city administrative officer's office. He is, in fact, he has worked with, if not trained, the city, three CAOs, including Dr. C. Irwin Piper, Keith Comrie, and our current CAO, Bill Fujioka. Members of the council, what I said yesterday, I've been on the Budget and Finance Committee for two years now and started there, not having a great sense of analysis, fiscal analysis, et cetera. And this is the man who is our keeper of the budget. He is the one who keeps us on track, tells us each week in committee whether or not something in the spending limit makes sense, how we're doing on the budget. I don't know really what we're going to do as he leaves. And not only has he done it well, he has done it making it explainable, understandable, and taking very, very complicated tallies of figures and lots and lots of columns and bringing it down to a common sense, real-world choice that we have to make. As I say, as we're looking ahead at the year ahead, where there may be lots of uncertainties in our budget and the need for a steady guiding hand, I think he is going to be very, very, very sorely missed. As I said, Rich has had 30 years of dedicated public service. He's got a UCLA bachelor's degree, Cal State University master's. He has worked not only through three CAOs, but actually now four mayors. He actually started when Sam Yordi was mayor of the city, then Tom Bradley, Richard Riordan, and now James Han. He's been so key and instrumental in the CAO in any number of projects that he has handled, with a very, very steady hand, incredible personality and ease in explaining things. But he has decided that it's time to retire, to spend more time with his wife Wendy and his children, Kevin and Kelly, and to pursue some hobbies. I think he's earned it, but I hope he's not going to be too far away, because as I say, I think both Mr. Fujioka and the rest of us are going to be looking to turn to him to help explain again those complicated issues, keeping our budget purse strings in check and with a steady hand, knowing that we're going to make it at the end of the year better than we started. So Rich, it's really with great sadness that I am saying goodbye, but I do want to express our gratitude and our appreciation for your 30 years of service and your just incredible value to budget and finance and the city's budget process.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick comments. As you notice, there are staff in the city administrative office behind me, and they're here just because, for a number of things, not only to celebrate Rich's retirement, but out of their deep admiration, affection, and respect for Rich. Councilman Misakowski touched on something. He has been our budget officer for the past couple of years. And in that role, everything the city has done, from the services, our programs, everything has gone through his hands. And so with that, and through the hands of the CAO. And I joked today about, because of his efforts, Piperian works very well today, but that's a different story and a different joke. But what I wanted to come up here first and foremost is to recognize Rich, because through his qualities, he is the epitome of the true and the consummate public servant. And also, through my very interesting and very, I'll just leave it interesting, experience as your CAO, Rich has been the person that I'm absolutely dependent on. And there is, on each and every occasion, he's been there for me, he's been there for the office, and foremost, he's been there for the city. And with that, I wish him the best in his retirement.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Fujioka makes reference to the staff of the CAO being here. We'd like for them to stand as Rich makes his remark. Staff of the CAO, that's what you would give them a round of applause as they give Rich a round of applause, all right? Rich, you brought your cheerleading session with you, so that's a good sign. Proceed, sir.
They're great, aren't they?
They are.
I think the world of them. Just to be very brief, I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Fujioka and all the staff for all the support that they've given me over the years. It's been a very exciting and rewarding experience. But more importantly, I'd like to thank my wife Wendy and my son Kevin and Kelly for being my support. They have propped me up over the many ups and downs that we've been through through 30 years, and without them, I absolutely could not have done it. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf, and on behalf of the entirety of the body, we wish you our very best. Thank you very much.
Ms. Misakowski, we thank you. We now recognize Mr. Padilla for presentations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I'd like to call forward a group of students from my district, from Boquema Middle School, a choir known as the Boquema Singers. Are we ready? Let's come on up. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in welcoming to council chambers today the approximately 30 students, don't know if the entire choir is here, who are from Pacoima Middle School. The choir itself has been in place for many, many years, although this particular group of students has only been together for about three weeks. It was important for me to want to share this special presentation with you. When I first heard about it, the students, their director, Scott Mandell, and a friend, Wally Briskin, were so moved by the incidents from last Tuesday that they composed a song to express the feelings in their hearts and feelings that we all share from the tragedies last week. It was so touching and so powerful that they raised and caught the eye of CNN, who has since visited the school and taped the students in a performance that has yet to air, but I think we can anticipate it very shortly as part of the many, many tributes that we all see on television at the end of every day. Want to welcome the students for the presentation and make a special acknowledgement of their parents who are here also in support and ask them that they honor us with this song.
That's Pacoima Middle School. Give them another big round of applause.
Mr. Chair, colleagues, I thank you for these last few minutes. I, as you, have been witness to many tributes and testimonials and stories these last couple of weeks, but I think you'll agree with me that the message of that single flame that continues to burn at the Statue of Liberty, so beautifully expressed by this wonderful and diverse group of students, is just as powerful as any of the messages that we have heard in this last week, and how fitting it is that that hope and that symbol of liberty is being shared with us by young people, the symbol of our future, the symbol of the future of this country, and the future of our democracy. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. May I take a moment to acknowledge one of the administrators of the Pacoima Middle School, Mr. Aaron Mareski. Mr. Mareski is a longtime educator. I know that because he was a high school history teacher of mine at Manual Arts High. So give him a hand, Aaron Mareski. Ms. Msikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank Mr. Padilla and the students from Pacoima Middle School for coming down... I just, members of the council, this was moving. This is an incredible performing arts group. I have had the pleasure of seeing them perform at an event in the Mid Valley, for the Mid Valley Y. And if any of you get the flyer to go and see this group perform and see their creativity, their enthusiasm, their talent, we just got a wonderful sample of it, but let me tell you, it's one of the most worthwhile shows you will ever see, so keep your eye out for that flyer.
Here, here. Give them another hand, I tell you. Mr. Padilla? Thank you. We are now going to be favored by a solo by the one and only Alejandro Padilla. Are we prepared to proceed with the next order of business, Mr. Clerk?
Approval of the minute.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Wise second. That will be the order in that regard. Another presentation? All right. Mr. Reyes has a presentation, Mr. Clerk. Are there other presentations? Because Mr. Padilla had indicated that he was the last presenter. All right, after Mr. Reyes, we'll proceed to the order of the business. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and Council members. That was a great presentation from our U. But members of the council, today I have with me some very special people, one of whom represents one of the jewels of my district, the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts, and the other who, for many, needs no introduction, because she is one of the most popular actresses of the Mexican film industry, Mercedes Mechecarenio. That with me today, because starting this evening and continuing through November 4th, the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts will be premiering the production of Salon Mexico. Said in 1936, the story illuminates a small slice of Mexican history at the infamous club nightclub located in Mexico City that revolves around a murder that took place at the salon during its heyday. This nightclub, which did exist, was similar to its European counterparts, where everyone from aristocrats to socialites, poets, and politicians would gather, kind of like the pantry. Just kidding. Only at night. But members, let me share with you a little bit about the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts. They were founded almost 30 years ago in 1973 and incorporated by Carmen Zapata, who many of you know, and they have been at the present location in Lincoln Heights since 1980. They have an annual audience of about 280,000 people. They were founded for the sole purpose of presenting Latino world drama to an audience of English and Spanish. While they will tell you that they came together in recognition of Latino cultural diversity, I can tell you that the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts is a celebration of our culture. Over the years, they have given voice to many young Latino and Latina writers and have presented a venue for the Latino community to all to tell its own stories, and for that I am truly grateful. So I want to present this certificate to Araceli Alvarez, who's representing Bilingual Foundation of the Arts.
Thank you very much. I'm the Managing Director of the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts. On behalf of its founders, Board of Trustees, and staff, I want to thank you, the City of Los Angeles, and of course, our district council member, Esraires, for recognizing the effort and the community service that the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts has been presenting to our community in Southern California. Thank you very much. And I have here posters, invitations for all of you to come and join us for this exciting production, and you will have a lot of fun, you will remember, some of you, what happened in Mexico during the thirties. And also, these productions are alternated in English and Spanish. It means that anybody can come and have fun. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Please, if I may, I'd like to also share with you a little bit about Mechecarenio. She has been the recipient of numerous awards and nominations for her artistic and dramatic achievements. El Ariel and El Erado de Mexico, which is Mexico's equivalent to an Academy Award nomination. She has represented Mexico at some of the world's most prestigious film festivals of Europe, including the Cannes Film Festival. She has starred in 17 pictures over her career, two of which she wrote and five of which she produced. She has performed in off-Broadway plays as a theater actress. She is a singer and a dancer who has studied with the finest maestros throughout the world. To say that we feel honored and privileged to have her in this council is an understatement. To tell her how grateful I am that she has lent her vast talents to the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts would not be enough, but I am truly grateful. So I'd like to present to you this very small token of my appreciation for what you are doing for our community and for what you have done for the artistic world on the whole. I would please ask to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I am very proud. I am very happy. I thank you very much. I appreciate it. I would like you to go and see this play, and it's full of passion, love, and if you want to have a moment of joy, you should come and be happy. I am very happy. God bless you. God bless America. I am proud to say that I am an American citizen too, and I am very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. I have also with us the Department of Parenting and Family Education. Members of the council, with me today are members of the Department of Parenting and Family Education, and they are members of what I like to think of as being the city's extended family. And that's because this particular department operates throughout the Los Angeles Unified School District. They are with me today for a very special reason. They are celebrating their 75th anniversary. You should know that this organization found its roots in 1926 as part of a Rockefeller grant to start up a Bureau of Parent Education, and was supposed to have started on an experimental basis under the Adult Division of the LAUSD. That experiment took off, and today, this department conducts its work throughout the entire city. It serves the constituents in my district and Franklin Community Adult School, Wilson, Lincoln Community Adult School, Belmont Community Adult School. Members, I think it was important that I bring them in today, because we, as a council, do have an impact on our schools, and of course, the schools have an impact on our constituents. So it's important for us to start recognizing the good work of the school, district, and its employees. I think it will only help facilitate that communication. And the truth is that we are all fighting the same battle. To accept this resolution on behalf of Los Angeles City Council, signed by myself and Councilman Mark Lee Thomas, I'd like to provide this certificate to Susan Garrick Cantor, Coordinator of Parenting and Family Education.
Thank you very much. President, council members, it's a pleasure for me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Department of Parenting and Family Education, which is part of the Division of Career and Adult Education through Los Angeles Unified Schools. Parenting education, it touches us all. Not everyone is a parent, but all of us were children, and many of us had the experience of being nurtured by positive adults. Others, however, have had the yearning to be nurtured by positive adults. Our children are our most precious resource. Their parents are the nurturers and the educators, and therefore, for three quarters of a century, 75 years, our department has supported the desire and the need for parent education. We have throughout the district 34 courses and many varied kinds of programs. I thank you on behalf of the department and also the division for the recognition of our 75 years of work of providing education for parents. We need that recognition. It motivates us to continue our responsibilities, and we are motivated. Now, we ask you also for your support, because after 75 years, many people are still unaware of parent education and our department. We have free classes. They're taught by credentialed adult educators with specializations in parent education all over Los Angeles. We need your support for parent education so that we can serve our diverse population of parents and children. Together, we will nurture the greatest resource that we have: our children. Thank you for this honor today. I would like to also just introduce Dolores Diaz-Cary, who's the Director of Instruction, our boss, and our support.
Thank you, Mr. President and honorable council members. On behalf of the Division of Adult and Career Education and our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Santiago Jackson, I would like to thank you for this recognition and to let you... Dr. Santiago Jackson, I would like to thank you for this recognition and to let you know that adult education in Los Angeles is this year celebrating 120 years, and we are proud of our Department of Parenting Education in their celebration of the seventy-five years. Thank you for your support, and thank you for this honor.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Han seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be addressed. Item number twenty-two, request from Council District Seven, this matter be received and filed.
Without objection, colleagues, receiving file item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-five, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until September 28th.
Request to continue item twenty-five, colleagues, also without objection.
Item number thirty, a request from Council District One to continue that matter until October 5th.
Item thirty, colleagues, without objection, that shall be continued.
Mr. President, there's a few ordinances on the desk. Did you wish to consider those at this time?
Yes, while we still have twelve members.
Okay, items number three and four are items noticed for public hearing, and item number twelve is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Items three, four, and twelve, colleagues, are ordinances. Want to take advantage of the fact that there are still twelve of us here. I do not have cards from members of the public to speak on those items, so we shall deem the public hearing open and closed for items three, four, and twelve. Any members wishing to speak on items three, four, or twelve? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items three, four, and twelve. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved.
Mr. President, that brings you to the commission appointments. Item number five is a Transportation Committee report regarding the appointment of John Barbarian to the Board of Taxe Cap Commissioners.
Is he here? If we can call him forward. Thank you for your patience. Actually, I hope you enjoyed some of the presentations today. Colleagues before us is another commission nominee. A public hearing has been held in committee. Any members wishing to pose any questions or make any comments?
Mr. Barbarian, have you served as a commissioner before for the city of Los Angeles? First time. Do you live in the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, sir.
Is somewhere your address is posted outside of the city?
That's mail address because I live in Sherman Oaks.
That's your mail address, so you have two addresses.
No. It's the city of Los Angeles, but it's Beverly Hills P.O. Post Office. It comes through Mulholland Drive. That's why all the mail comes through Beverly Hills Post Office.
All right. What's been your background that would really give you interest in serving in a taxe cap commission, as a taxe cap commission? Do you have any experience at all? Any background, any, how do you develop an interest in this?
I mean, it's like everything else. I'm in business management and the management, that's really where I located. I belong to a lot of different boards, and I like to do my service to the city of Los Angeles.
Right. Have you read anything about the history of the taxe cap industry in the city of Los Angeles, bandit cabs or anything like that? Have you taken the initiative to read about any of that?
You know, I read some things, but I'm pretty sure I can learn a little bit more about it.
There's a lot to learn. I mean, I've been, I used to be chairman of Transportation Commission Committee for about eight years, and I must tell you that during that time, I discovered they have many, many problems in the taxe cap industry. One's stealing the other's rights and benefits, and bandit cabs operating within the city, legalizing some, and then they become bandits. You've got a big job ahead of you. That's why I set it up, took it apart, took it away from the commission itself and established a taxe cap commission, you know?
I'm gonna try to do my best.
But I would think that, when were you nominated? What day? A week ago, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, a month ago?
Approximately about a month ago.
About a month ago. I mean, if you're gonna make a contribution to this commission, to the city, I would think that they would have given you some documents, some things to read on right now.
They did, definitely.
Did you read them?
Yes.
Related to the taxi industry, like contracts and franchises and things like that? And some of those taxe cap drivers don't have driver licenses, I mean, contability, check and balance. You've got a big job in front of you. You have to do a lot of reading, and I would hope that you would do that in days and months and years ahead.
Well, I'm very good general in the business management, and I hope I'm, I'm hoping that I do my best.
Nothing to do with business management, need nothing, you don't have to be a business manager, you just come in here, just commit it. I'm gonna learn about this job, I'm gonna work hard at it. If your business manager makes it easier if you commit it, that's fine.
I am committed, and I know I can do a good job.
This is, I've been picking on the taxe cap industry for a long time. That's what they say about me because I've made the statement before and until he can prove otherwise, we're in the most corrupt industries in the city of Los Angeles. Now, you have a big job in front of you, and I hope and expect that you'll do it.
I'll try to do my best, and I hope I can do the best job I can.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barbarian, good morning. I just want to let you know, Councilmember Holden, that a friend of mine, Faith Salee, has actually tutored Mr. Barbarian's children, and it for sure is in the city of Los Angeles where his residence is, so wanted to confirm that for you. I rise in support of your nomination. I wanted to ask you one question, which was, in some areas of the city, it's still quite difficult to get a taxe cab to come to those areas. In areas where I represent, in the hills of Echo Park, there are some folks who are dependent on taxe cabs who have no other form of transportation, and I was wondering if we could count on you to be a voice to make sure that we really find some ways to make sure the taxi companies are serving all parts of the city.
Yes. Definitely. I think that's a very good idea because that's gonna be our job to try to see what we can do.
Just to bring your attention, that's continuing, and thank you very much, and I support the nomination.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and the confirmation. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number six is a commission appointment. It's a Transportation Committee report recommendation regarding the appointment of Howard Coleman to the Board of Transportation Commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Coleman. Public hearing was held in committees, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
Colleagues, before us is the appointment of another commissioner, Mr. Coleman. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Oh, Mr. Coleman, how are you doing?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good, good. You want to do this job also, huh?
Yes, I do.
I see. Well, you, have you read the documents that this Department of Transportation gave you? Anything associated with your duties as a commissioner, as a transportation commissioner?
I've read the things I got off the website, and they just gave me this today.
Oh, they just gave you today?
Today.
When were you nominated?
I've, uh, three weeks, four weeks ago.
Three, four weeks ago? We have to talk to the Department of Transportation, and they, here in present, I mean, they just, they're not doing you justice. Number one, you have a lot of responsibility, like franchising, ambulance services, setting rates on what they're gonna charge patients and all to be transported, you know, and also traffic flow, congestion plans. You've got an awesome responsibility. Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
I mean, what people complain about the most is they came moving this city because traffic, bopper to bopper, back to back, and you're in a position to say to us that if we're gonna overdevelop in an area, it's, hey, you gotta have some transportation mitigation plans in place. You have to study and understand that. It's a big job. It's like doing a lot of work, more than you do now, that you get paid for, but for free, and I trust that that's what your commitment is, and that's why you accepted the nomination for this, as a commissioner.
Yes, I understand the responsibility.
It's a real big job. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Mr. Coleman, good morning. I just wanted to ask you a similar question, either if you had any ideas or if we could count on you to make sure that we continue to push for access in terms of service to all parts of the city by taxi companies, in my case, especially, you know, hills of Echo Park and other parts of the city that might be deemed by some to be dangerous, but nevertheless have folks that are dependent on taxe cabs.
Difficult for me to respond because I think the taxe cap commission deals with that particular issue, not necessarily the transportation commission. I understand you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Items number one and two on the regular agenda are items which are public convenience and necessity applications in Council District Five. A motion is required from the floor.
Okay, these items have been noticed for public hearing. I do not have any card from members of the public wishing to speak, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are alcohol license applications in my district, and I would move that they be denied at this time without prejudice so we can continue part of the process with respect to this.
And that's for both items one and two?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, motion to deny the applications, both items one and two, without prejudice. Is there a second? Mr. Garcetti, seconds. Any others wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Weiss's motion is adopted. Next item, please.
Items number seven through eleven are items for which public hearings have been held.
Colleagues, items seven through eleven, public hearings have been held. Any specials?
Nine, eleven special.
Mr. Holden calls nine and eleven special. Any other specials? Seven, eight, and ten, any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers thirteen through twenty-seven on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number twenty-two and twenty-five have been acted on.
As has item number twelve, I believe. And I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on any additional items in this area. Any specials? Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, we ask that nineteen S be a receivable file.
We'll take that as a technical amendment to item nineteen. Nineteen S will be receivable filed. Otherwise, the rest of nineteen stays in place. Any other specials? Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti calls twenty-six special. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes? Why don't you use that microphone there? Any other specials? Let's hold on a second here.
I just need to change the dates on B and F. I do this in a verbal fashion, where on B, I need to change to October 6th and 7th, and on F to September 23rd.
This is on item nineteen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll vote on those special event motions with the proper changes to the dates referenced by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number twenty-eight is an item noticed for closed session, and the city attorney has opined that that matter may be dealt with in open session.
Mr. Chair, just for the information of council, all that the city attorney is asking at this time is that the council designate the director of planning as the person, authorize them as the person to sign off on the settlement agreement which council has previously approved, and that would be all, and they could do that in open session.
Any members wishing to speak on item twenty-nine? Twenty-eight, excuse me, item twenty-eight. Seeing none, we have the city attorney's recommendation before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's send that forth with. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-nine is an item notice for public, excuse me, is a continuation agenda item. It's a public hearing has not been held, item twenty-nine.
And we do have one card on that item. Let's call that special.
Mr. President, that brings you back to item number nine, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Actually, let's take twenty-nine out of order because we have public comment on that, and we can dispense with that and let Ms. Cynthia Cooper come forward, offer her testimony, and go on about her day. Is Cynthia Cooper available? I guess she's left. Public hearing is then, oh, she's here. We'll hold it on the desk. Mr. Clerk?
Item number nine, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members on nine, can we get a staff report on that? Before I start asking questions?
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Rifkin with Department of Transportation. Item number nine is a request to approve a local implementation report on the congestion management program. This report-
Hey, would you just explain what a congestion management program is all about for the benefit of someone who might not know, including you?
In the Reader's Digest version is that-
No, no, I just want the version which we adopted a few years back.
The congestion management program is a program that's adopted by the county MTA, and it requires a cooperation of the local cities to report on debits and credits.
Before you go on, this is the program that was required by the state of California.
Right.
Okay, and it gave us an option of having our own congestion management program or co-mingling that with the kind of MTA, is that not correct? And we elected to do that, is that correct?
Correct.
I think they, we need to know the background information, that's why I'm asking you to do that. I have some idea what it's all about, but a lot of folks might not. Go ahead.
Okay, so the requirement is that in order to receive gas tax funds from the raise in the gas tax in 1992, that we should cooperate with this congestion management program, and certain locations were designated part of a congestion management system, and if the city does something to improve traffic on those systems, they get a credit. If they do something to degrade traffic on those intersections, it's a debit. Approving new development is considered a debit. Because the city has contributed a lot of its local money to the Metro Rail Red Line and other improvements through the call for projects, the city has done a lot more to improve traffic than to decrease traffic, and so this biannual report reports that we have almost two million credits.
Okay, now what about the congestion management plan that relates to traffic mitigation, even though we come up with more development and more construction? Are we mitigating it, or are we getting credits for that as well?
We get credits for every developer-
Can you give us an idea what kind of, where we get credits for, other than just using some of our monies for Metro Rail, the Blue Line, et cetera?
If, for example, we approve a development and we require the developer to do traffic mitigations to improve the situation around the development, that's considered a credit.
Well, I just wanted you to explain it all. In fact, now we have six to two thousand ninety-two credits, and we pick up maybe coming year, another, the same amount, which gives us about one million nine hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred credits. That lets us develop some more property, have additional development, and maybe don't even mitigate because we already have enough credits. I mean, how you apportion a number of credits for a development project?
That, the apportionment of the credits would be an item that we'd have to bring to city council.
I mean, what's the formula is what I'm saying. How many square feet, what the footpad development, how many square feet you can develop in the project, how many debits do we get, credits, debits we're gonna lose, how much we'll be debited for, and that'll be subtracted by credits. Do you have any idea?
We don't have a unit cost of those debits because it's related to what the overall transportation improvement program is on MTA's long-range plan, and so we are revisiting with MTA the whole process of debits and credits.
Okay, thank you, but you will, you can come talk to me about that. I'd like to know more about it. All right, thank you. You're doing a good job.
Any other members wishing to speak? Mr. Holden, what's your desire here? Mr. Holden, what's your desire here? Then we have the report before us, and a motion to note and file. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And that will be the order. Next item, please.
Item number eleven, called special by Council Member Holden.
Item number eleven, Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, this is another report, saying note and file, and I need to have a report on this, Mr. President. About traffic tickets not being written by police officers, and the fact that we're thirteen thousand officers' days set aside for DNC and for training, and that's going to reflect in the general fund. So we're going to end up with a deficit, a shortfall, and with this discussion regarding the new compressed work schedule, this is directly related, and I think it should be put on the table for discussion. Anyone to report on this one, or should we just hold it over until Wednesday, so we can get a full report?
We could hold it over, Mr. Holden, if you would like, although there is a report that came from the committee and from the department, and actually, there is a new assignment of forty E cars. The one decline last year was attributable to the DNC, where so many officers had to go for a lot of other training, as well as assignment through DNC. So that was just, last year was an anomaly. Other than that, the citations issued have essentially been increasing, and we're looking to maintain that. In committee, we did ask that this be reported back within six months on how the E cars are working, whether or not we've been able to maintain the E cars, which are new traffic patrol cars, not motor officers, but the black and whites, and the expectation is that they would increase the traffic citations by about fifty thousand a year. So if we wait till, get the next report back in six months, then we'll have a marker midway through our fiscal year.
We're talking about red light enforcement, we're talking about the number of police officers that's deployed, and that fifty thousand shortened citations, it's going to affect the general fund, it's going to be reported back to Budget and Finance. This is a very complicated report, and is going to impact on what we do here. So I would say that in order for me to get some additional information to discuss, it's a correlation, Mr. President, directly with the compressed work schedule, and what happens in a crisis situation, which redeploy police officers to perform other duties. And so I'd like to, with your consent, hold this over until Wednesday, because we're not here on Tuesday, and to give me an opportunity to, because I didn't hear this matter, I was not in the committee, to get a better profile on what we're talking about here, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.[801.44]
Good morning, everybody.
Buenos dias.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 25th, the year 2001. It is 10:25 a.m. The City Council meets every Monday, excuse me, every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10 a.m., or as close to it as we can get a quorum. We can be viewed live on your table station, Channel 35, or via webcast on the city's homepage, or heard on council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zein, Padilla, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. If I can ask everybody to please rise and ask Chief Wilson from our airport police department to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President, both as a representative of Los Angeles World Airports and as an immigrant, I'm honored to do this this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, please place your right hand over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Galanter seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number 10, a request from Council District One to continue that item to Friday, September 28th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 10 without objection.
Item number 36, a request by Councilmember Weiss to receive and file that item.
Item 36?
Yes, Mr. President.
Request to receive and file without objection.
On the regular agenda, there are several commissioners to confirm. Item 11 is a planning and land use management committee report that is being submitted, and it's confirmation of Joseph Klein to the Planning Commission.
Okay, if we can call Mr. Klein forward. Colleagues, as Mr. Klein comes forward, let me make an announcement. There are several hot items on today's council agenda, so I'd like to proceed in the following sequence. Mr. Klein, up into one of these chairs. We're going to take the confirmation of commissioners first. I know there's a number, but a couple that we can take in groups, and then proceed to the item relative to the LAX employees, as well as the other employees at our airport, and then proceed with the agenda in the normal sequence. So the only item we'll be taking out of order is the item relative to all the employees at Los Angeles International Airport. Okay? I believe public hearing has been held, the confirmation of Mr. Klein. Any members wishing to ask questions? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, members of the council, I just want to share with you that I've met with Mr. Klein. He has a vast experience, has spent three mayors. Throughout the years he has been contributing to our city, and I think we're very lucky to have such a gentleman who is volunteering, performing this function, and to have this kind of expertise before us, I encourage you to for an eye vote. Mr. Klein, again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Reyes speaks synchently about the nominee's credentials before us, and that's only because if we were to talk about them for the full length of what would be warranted, we would fill up more time than what we can obviously afford. And so, Mr. Klein, our conversation of yesterday was most revealing. It suggested to me that your sense of civic commitment warrants your being confirmed, and it is what the high degree of respect and appreciation that I express to you, the sentiment that a person such as yourself, willing to give of your time to make this city better, is only what will make Los Angeles the city that we all hope it will be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the confirmation of Mr. Klein. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 20, confirmation of Monica Navarro to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission. Public hearing has not been held. Arts Health Humanities Commission waived consideration of the matter.
If she can come forward. Public hearing has not been held, and I do not have cards for members of the public to speak on this item, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the committee that waived consideration here, I would move approval of this nominee, and wish her all the best in her service.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zein.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I know Monica, I know her family, I know her dedication to the city, the community of Los Angeles, and highly recommend her approval for this commission appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now all the commissioners seeing how easy it is. Should have been here a couple of weeks ago. Next item, please.
Items 21 and 22 are confirmations to the, to El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority. Item 21 is Veronica Gutierrez, and she's not in council today. Item number 22 is Melissa Ilario.
Is Ms. Ilario in chambers? If she is, if we can ask her to come forward. Has public hearing been held on these?
No, Mr. President. Committee waived consideration of these items as well, and that's the Arts Health and Humanities Commission.
Okay, and I do not have requests for members of the public to speak, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed for both commissioners. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as Chair of the relevant committee here, we waived consideration of these nominations, and we would move their approval by the full council, and again, we wish you all the best in your service to the city, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Zein.
The mayor's making some wonderful appointments to these commissions. I know the experience, the dedication that Melissa has, a former employee of now Senator Richard Alarcon. She's worked City Hall, she's worked the state of California, and she's well in tune and informed. Another wonderful appointment by the mayor, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Any other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation of both commissioners. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, and I do not have cards for members of the public on this item, so we shall deem public hearing both open and closed. Members wishing to speak? Ms. Perry.
I wanted to speak, thank you, Mr. President, I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Gilmore. He has been just an astounding person and personality, involving himself in the homeless issues in the Ninth Council District and on a citywide basis, and he's a real testament to putting your money where your mouth is, because Tom has employed a number of people who, at the time, were homeless and are now no longer homeless because of his efforts, and I look forward to working with him on the homeless, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I promised Mr. Gilmore to give him some grueling questions, so there's two things I'd like to ask you, Mr. Gilmore. One, there's a lot of discussion about street furniture, about the public toilets, and making sure that homeless folks have tokens to be able to use that. And there's...
Good morning, everybody.
Buenos dias.
If I can, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 25th, the year 2001. It is 10:25 a.m. The City Council meets every Monday, excuse me, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m., or as close to it as we can get a quorum. We can be viewed live on your table station, Channel 35, or via webcast on the city's homepage, or heard on council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zein, Padilla, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. If I can ask everybody to please rise and ask Chief Wilson from our Airport Police Department to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President, both as a representative of Los Angeles World Airports and as an immigrant. I'm honored to do this this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, please place your right hand over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Galanter seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number 10, a request from Council District One to continue that item to Friday, September 28.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 10 without objection.
Item number 36, a request by Council Member Weiss to receive and file that item.
Item 36?
Yes, Mr. President.
Request to receive and file without objection.
On the regular agenda, there are several commissioners to confirm. Item 11 is a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report that is being submitted, and it's confirmation of Joseph Klein to the Planning Commission.
Okay. If we can call Mr. Klein forward. Colleagues, as Mr. Klein comes forward, let me make an announcement. There are several hot items on today's council agenda, so I'd like to proceed in the following sequence. Mr. Klein, up into one of these chairs. We're going to take the confirmation of commissioners first. I know there's a number, but a couple that we can take in groups, and then proceed to the item relative to the LAX employees, as well as the other employees at our airport, and then proceed with the agenda in the normal sequence. So the only item we'll be taking out of order is the item relative to all the employees at Los Angeles International Airport. Okay? I believe public hearing has been held on the confirmation of Mr. Klein. Any members wishing to ask questions? Mr. Reyes.
Council President Members of the Council, I just want to share with you that I've met with Mr. Klein. He has a vast experience that spans three mayors. Throughout the years he has been contributing to our city. I think we're very lucky to have such a gentleman who is volunteering, performing this function, and to have this kind of expertise before us. I encourage you for an eye vote, Mr. Klein. Again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Mr. Reyes speaks synchly about the nominee's credentials before us, and that's only because if we were to talk about them for the full length of what would be warranted, we would fill up more time than what we can obviously afford. And so, Mr. Klein, our conversation of yesterday was most revealing. It suggested to me that your sense of civic commitment warrants your being confirmed, and it is what the high degree of respect and appreciation that I expressed to you. The sentiment that a person such as yourself willing to give of your time to make this city better is only what will make Los Angeles the city that we all hope it will be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of Mr. Klein. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 20, confirmation of Monica Navarro to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission. Public hearing has not been held. Arts, Health, Humanities Commission waived consideration of the matter.
If she can come forward. Public hearing has not been held, and I do not have cards from members of the public to speak on this item, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the committee that waived consideration here, I would move approval of this nominee and wish her all the best in her service.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zein.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I know Monica, I know her family, I know her dedication to the city, the community of Los Angeles, and highly recommend her approval for this commission appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, all the commissioners seeing how easy it is. Should have been here a couple of weeks ago. Next item, please.
Items 21 and 22 are confirmations to the, to El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument Authority. Item 21 is Veronica Gutierrez, and she's not in council today. Item number 22 is Melissa Ilario.
Is Ms. Ilario in chambers? If she is, if we can ask her to come forward. Has public hearing been held on these?
No, Mr. President. Committee waived consideration of these items as well, and that's the Arts, Health, and Humanities Commission, Committee.
Okay, and I do not have requests from members of the public to speak, so we shall deem public hearing open and closed for both commissioners. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as the Chair of the relevant committee here, we waived consideration of these nominations, and we would move their approval by the full council, and again, we wish you all the best in your service to the city, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Zein.
The mayor's making some wonderful appointments to these commissions. I know the experience, the dedication that Melissa has, a former employee of now Senator Richard Alarcon. She's worked City Hall, she's worked the state of California, and she's well in tune and informed. Another wonderful appointment by the mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Any other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation of both commissioners. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Both are approved. Congratulations, Ms. Ilario.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 23 is confirmation of Thomas Gilmore to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. This has also been waived by committee, and public hearing has not been held.
Okay, and I do not have cards from members of the public on this item, so we shall deem public hearing both open and closed. Members wishing to speak? Ms. Perry.
I wanted to speak, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Gilmore. He has been just an astounding person and personality, involving himself in the homeless issues in the Ninth Council District and on a citywide basis, and he's a real testament to putting your money where your mouth is, because Tom has employed a number of people who, at the time, were homeless and are now no longer homeless because of his efforts, and I look forward to working with him on the homeless, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I promised Mr. Gilmore to give him some grueling questions, so there's two things I'd like to ask you, Mr. Gilmore. One, there's a lot of discussion about street furniture, about the public toilets, and making sure that homeless folks have tokens to be able to use that, and there's been some council members who've criticized that or wanted to make sure that we're going to be vigilant about the public safety concerns around that, and so I was wondering if you could speak to that first. And then, secondly, what do you see as the proper role of police interacting with the homeless population, and how can we kind of better accommodate that? I know we've had some legal action recently against us in terms of that interaction, and how can we make that better or take that burden off of them?
Well, those are two great questions. I'll try and answer them relatively quickly. On the, on the, the public toilet issue, I am in strong support of the, of the public toilets. I think it's absolutely essential to the city at large. I am concerned that perhaps people are trying to focus too many of them in, in the, in the one place where we all consider homelessness our greatest issue, which is on the east side of downtown. I'd like to see them dispersed a little more throughout the city, because I want people to get used to the fact that public toilets can be actually an amenity for different parts of the city. So I, I support them strongly. I hope we do lots and lots of them throughout the city. The other issue with the police is an extremely difficult issue, as you well know. I'm hoping that we get to use our police very actively in preventing and, and addressing crime. It is, I, I don't, having said that, I don't believe homelessness per se is a crime, nor is poverty a crime, but I think sometimes we tend to lump them all together from both directions, both from the homeless advocate direction and, as well as from the business person's direction. So I, I think we, we can't generalize about the police and what their role is in this thing, other than that they should be allowed to enforce the law, but they should not be interpreting the law to mean that a person who's homeless is violating the law simply by being homeless. So I, I think, it's a difficult job, though. It's the hardest job in town.
Mr. Reyes.
Council President Members, it's good to see Tom Gilmore here advocating. But I want, I have a question regarding, there's a proposal by Sheriff Baca to put a facility near the jail towers, right at the edge of Chinatown. I want to get your perspective on that, and what is your position?
I, I think we already have problems with regard to the placement of correctional facilities and, and the nearby homeless environments, and I think placing facilities anywhere near homeless environments without a direct plan for how, when someone gets out of those facilities, they are directed into a social service program, is a recipe for failure. I think every time the Twin Towers lets someone out right now, that they essentially walk to Skid Row and re-enter the same, the very same society that got them in jail in the first place. So I think we have a bad, bad revolving door, and I think that facilities for treatment are a vital component, but facilities for correctional facilities are another thing entirely, and I think it's a, it's, it's a wrong-headed plan to put correctional facilities anywhere near homeless service provider areas.
Well, should you be confirmed, I would hope that the body that you're engaging now could perhaps ask for this plan and interact with the officials at that level to see how it is that we can achieve a more compatible relationship with our environment.
Yeah, I think it has to be compatible, and they have to be thought about in the same sentence. Otherwise, one simply negates all the value of the other. It, it can be very sad. And, and if it's possible, and, and I beg your indulgence for just one comment, in a city the size of Los Angeles, it's important to note that the Los Angeles Homeless Services uses a budget that is one-tenth the size of the budget in the city of New York, and I hope that when you do get some new requests on behalf of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority for funding, you will look at it closely, because funding is very, very important, and I think we're beginning to get a handle on some of the homeless issues in Los Angeles, but funding is critical to that.
Any other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 24, a request, it's also a confirmation, however, Mr. Garcetti has requested that item be continued to Friday for consideration of the, the confirmation Ethics Commission submission.
Colleagues, request to continue item 24 without objection to this Friday. Next item?
Next items, Mr. President, are confirmations to the Planning Commission and various area planning commissions. It's items 25 through 30, and there is a card on item number 27.
Okay, if I can ask all the nominees, items 25 through 30, to come forward as a group, play the little musical chairs here. We'll take consideration of all the, either citywide planning commission and area planning commissioners together. We do have a card on item 27, so we shall open the public hearing and call forward Don Schultz.
Good morning, President Padilla, Council Members. My name is Don Schultz, President of Anais Homeowners Association. President Padilla, I'm really not here to oppose this appointment on number 27. I'm sure the mayor's appointment is a, a good recommendation. The only thing I'm asking is that consideration be made by the, by the full city council in retaining Seela Berman, who is being removed to make room for this particular commissioner. There is another opening on this commission, and I would ask that this commissioner be taking the opening slot and retain Seela Berman. She's been very good for the community, she's fair on her analysis for the businesses and also the residents' point of view, and we ask that you retain her on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on these commission appointments. Mr. Reyes.
Council President Members, I've had the opportunity to meet and discuss with most of the folks here. We reviewed in committee. I think we're truly blessed to have such a strong array of skills and perspectives sitting on these commissions. I look forward to their expertise in helping us guide the neighborhood councils and all the other interest groups that will be interacting in these very crucial decisions and how we impact our environment. And just one note, I want to congratulate Mr. John McCosker. He is a new father of yesterday, so I just thought that several bridges are being built here, and congratulations, John. Thank you.
Mr. Zein.
Which nominee is from the South Valley? I'd like to know your position on Amundson, the Amundson Project.
I haven't, I haven't studied the Amundson Project. I, I know that it impacts the South Valley, but I, I, be more specific if you can on the decision.
Well, the development itself in the eastern part of the Ventura County area, the western part of Los Angeles County, with a very negative impact on the West San Fernando Valley, where I represent, the Third District, the infrastructure of the West San Fernando Valley not able to support that development with the traffic, are other areas of concern to the community. While it's in another county, the negative impact on the community is of great concern. The state senator, the assembly member, and the local communities have all been opposed to it, and I was concerned, your position as a South Valley Commissioner, what position you would take if that came before you?
Well, I'm, I mean, I, I'm opposed to any development that, that doesn't have the proper infrastructure to, to, to back it up, so I would, I would be opposed.
And I would suggest that if you have a few hours one of these mornings to jump on the Ventura Freeway at Mulholland Drive, Valley Circle, and drive downtown, and spend a couple hours in traffic, and then in the afternoon, try the commute back and just see how frustrated the people in that area are coming out of the Conejo Grade and the people in the West San Fernando Valley. That infrastructure's collapsed, so I just want to have you sensitive to that particular issue.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say on a personal note that I had the real pleasure this spring of running, not against, but with Robin Ritter-Simmon for this council seat, and, and I really mean that. I mean, oftentimes you run for office, and it's bitter, and it's divisive, and it's negative, and with Ms. Ritter-Simmon, it was anything but. I learned an awful lot from her about how the public sector and the private sector can really come together to improve neighborhood schools. She's been involved in her community for many, many years, and you're going to be a real, you know, a real credit to this area planning commission, and I look forward to your many years of service on it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Weiss.
Any other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirm-
Mark Bradley?
Did you push a button? Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, I, I just simply wanted to seize the opportunity to acknowledge the work that has been done by perhaps several of those who are before us, but particularly Commissioner Javier Lopez, having served as a CRA Commissioner, has seized the opportunity to think broadly and inclusively and advance the agenda of those communities that can best, at best, improve what the resources prudently applied for redevelopment project areas. That should, in my view, Members of the Council, put him in good stead as relates to the questions of planning and as they, and to relate with the issues of economic development. So I look forward to that kind of understanding, because it is fundamentally important as we think about the growth and development of our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Ridley Thomas. I look forward to working with you, both on CRA issues and on planning issues. Thank you for your time and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this distinguished panel, and I also have the good fortune of knowing Ms. Ritter-Simmon, and I'm really pleased that you're going to be staying in public service in another capacity. One question I would ask of everybody, and I, and I hope, to excuse the colloquialism, this won't just be spitting in the wind, but something that recurs when we look at planning throughout this city, that one, one element is how we distribute our resources, and there are certainly areas of need. I know the Council Member Hernandez, years ago, after their last census, mapped out this city and looking at areas and zones of need, whether it's folks who have English as a second language, or folks who are living in areas where there's no affordable housing, et cetera. But the second piece of the picture is how we do zoning, and how we can redistribute through zoning. And I remember when the item came up in Chatsworth, in Mr. Bernsen's district, about how we would look at a number of acres of land and whether they could be zoned in a way that people wouldn't have to board their horses right there, and Council Member Hernandez, who was still on the council that time, looked at me and he said, "If this was in one of our districts, the First or Thirteenth, we'd be arguing about whether there are 400 or 800 people on that plot of land, not whether or not there'd be horses or not." And I would just really, you can comment on this, but I would just nevertheless give you the, the caveat that I hope that you will take into consideration whenever you make planning decisions, even for an area where you're, it's easy to protect that area as it is, that there are other areas of the city and areas that are so densely built upon that they're exhausted and that infrastructure is exhausted, and where you can share that burden, whether it's affordable housing or infrastructure, or thinking about transit corridors, not just as the red line, but freeways and other things, that you would take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Any other members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, again, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, you are all approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Time to get back to work. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 31 is confirmation of Ellen Stein to the Board of Public Works.
As Ms. Stein comes forward, let me also announce, colleagues, we'll send all commission appointments forthwith to the mayor today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Public comment has been held on the confirmation of Ms. Stein. Members wishing to speak? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ms. Stein came before the Public Works Committee, and I wholeheartedly support her and hope that we have a unanimous confirmation. She's demonstrated an inordinate amount of sensitivity to the needs of all neighborhoods throughout the city and a great sense of vision in using Public Works as a tool for not only building infrastructure and cleaning up neighborhoods, but providing people with more information about how this department can be used to their best and most strategic advantage. So I support her, and I hope you will, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Commissioner Stein has served with distinction. She has been dignified and decisive in dealing with controversial matters in each and every part of this city. And I dare say, and Mr. Bernsen and Ms. Misakowski, as well as I know this specifically, that when matters needed to be addressed, and we needed someone to show leadership on the Board of Public Works, we could call Commissioner Stein without hesitation and be once again reassured of her commitment to the well-being of our respective districts, as well as to the citizens who reside therein, and do that with a clear commitment to making sure that the city's infrastructure is working as it ought to be working. And so it is without hesitation that I rise in support of her reconfirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Zein.
Mr. President, colleagues, I know that Ms. Stein has been on that commission, Public Works, for a period of time under the previous administration, did a tremendous job, and hopefully, and I know you will be confirmed for another term on that, Public Works, I would just ask that you find more asphalt to fix more streets in the valley and more sidewalk repair in the San Fernando Valley.
We're, we're doing our best, and, and I tell you, as I told someone last night, when we travel around with our Public Works Board meeting and we take it to different council districts, if people in all parts of the city could hear each other the way we hear them, everyone feels that they're not getting enough. Everyone feels a greater need for the services that we provide, and we are constantly trying to face that challenge of finding the resources to meet that demand. But we know how critically this important this is to everyone, and we know right now the San Fernando Valley is especially sensitive, and we are doing our best, and will continue to do our best, and work with council offices, as well as the mayor's office, to do whatever we possibly can to see that as many of those needs can be met as possible.
Thank you, and maybe you can help that airport commission president sort some of the problems out over there in your spare time.
I thought I was this close to not having to deal with him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bernsen.
Well, this probably isn't necessary, because I think everybody around this circle feels the way I do, but I can tell you that the service that we've gotten from, from the commission under her leadership in the past has been terrific, and anytime that I have had a problem in my office, it's been taken care of, so I, I think it's, I'm really happy that the mayor has chosen to reappoint Ellen to this commission, and I hope that we'll approve it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in strong support of this renomination, and this doesn't come at the expense of, of the valley or anyplace else, because I know that there are, are streets there, and I don't want to just be, you know, parochial. I, I think that one of the things that, whether it's in the valley or other parts of the city, too, that all of us, and I'm not putting this burden on you, have to also consider how we distribute things, is how old the roads actually are and the usage that they have, and, and many of our more central areas are thoroughfares for a lot of the traffic that comes from outlying areas, and we'll really look forward to providing you the structural means to do that, the, the resources to do that as well, and, and I re-welcome you aboard. Thanks.
Thank you, and, and we look forward to really all the support we can get for these endeavors.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of Ms. Stein. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Oh, no, come on, I was such-
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items 32 and 33 are communications from the mayor relative to appointments, and I believe Mr. Weiss has a motion regarding these two items.
Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, actually, on, on 32 and 33, we would move to receive and file these particular nominations, because it's my understanding that the nominees would like to withdraw their nominations.
Okay. Motion is to receive and file the, to commission nominees. Any other members wishing to speak? Any questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on receiving and filing both of those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those communications are received and filed. Next item, please.
Items 34 and 35 are communications from the Chair of the Planning Land Use Management Committee, and I believe those are also to receive and file, two nominations.
Colleagues, 34 and 35 are before us. Recommendation from the committee is to- Recommendation from the committee is to receive and file. Public hearing has been held. Members with any questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 34 and 35. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Committee report adopted. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, I believe you wish to take up item number 18, which is a report to be submitted from the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee relative to the Los Angeles Airport.
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, we're done now with the commission appointments for today. We now move to item 18, out of order, but to address the situation with potential job loss at Los Angeles International Airport. Want to recognize that there has been action and discussion at the commission level, but we will allow for a limited public comment. I'll call forward a few speakers. After public comment, we'll hear from Lydia Cannard, Executive Director of Lawa, and then open up the council discussion. Council calls forward at this time Madeline Janice Aparicio, to be followed by, is it Rafael Turner, somebody from Five Star Parking?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. My name is Madeline Janice Aparicio, and I'm the Director of the L.A. Alliance for New Economy, and we have, in the last couple of weeks, in the midst of this crisis, been working with three unions, who, there are many hundreds of workers here, from the Service Employees International Union, Local 1877, hotel employees and restaurant employees union, Local 814, and the Teamsters, Local 911. I wonder if everyone who's here, workers from the airport, could stand up? So these unions actually represent the vast majority of service workers based at LAX, and these are the same people who fought for many years for a living wage ordinance, for worker retention, to make the jobs at LAX, the service jobs, good jobs. Obviously, all of us are grieving at this moment with the tragedy in New York, and these workers, these are the people who, probably more than all of us, have a right to really be concerned about safety issues. They are in there every single day. But we also think that economic security is important, and it has to be considered in the overall picture. Right now, we estimate that between 1,000 and 2,000 of these service workers, including many of the people here with us, have been laid off in the last, suddenly, obviously with no notice. And we are here to ask for you to work, to begin to work on both a short-term and a long-term recovery plan, to deal with this displacement, and to get as many people as possible back to work. And basically, in the interest of time, we have five major points. The first thing is, we testified at the commission and asked the commission to consider reopening the central terminal parking lots with, obviously, appropriate security measures, as most of the other major airports around the country have done, and we believe, yesterday, the commission took beginning steps that we hope will result in that. We urge you to consider a program to reopen or build up as much as possible of the concessions, which are now closed to meter greeters, had a dramatic impact. There's about 200 concession workers that have already been laid off. We urge you to work with the federal government to potentially reopen the concessions to meter greeters, or to look at things like relocating checkpoints, or opening new concessions to minimize the dramatic impact of the layoffs. We hope that you will work with the federal government, the FAA, to ensure that whatever new security plan takes place doesn't throw the people who have been defending our airport for all these years in the trash, but takes them into consideration, values them, and gives them the training that they've been asking for. Fourth, we ask you to consider, as a temporary measure, in this moment where so many things are in flux, potentially either rent subsidies, or some kind of subsidy to the LAX-based employers, so that workers don't have to be laid off with absolutely no notice. And five, a long-term economic development program to help these displaced people, and obviously, the thousands of people being displaced in hotels and other businesses. We think there are many options, from legislative to financial. So we hope that this is the beginning of a really constructive rebuilding process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, to be followed by Carlos Howrigy.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council, President Padilla. I stand here before you as an employee and also a union representative, which is one of six here at Five Star Parking, LAX. I'm representing here today 351 workers that were laid off with no notice immediately last Wednesday. Fortunately, we've had a lot of movement today. We've been working with the mayor, Han, he's done a wonderful job, President Padilla, Ruth Glaner, she did a wonderful job also, working with our Secretary of Treasurer, to return 171 members back to work immediately. However, unfortunately, we have 180 members that are left unemployed, as well as the airport workers that are inside our terminals, so we strongly urge you to be the leaders in our community, as well as our country, to help return all our workers back to work and get that terminal open to the non-ticketed customers, because that's very essential to how LAX is run. I'm here to thank you for returning 171 of our workers, and also, on behalf of our members, to say, God bless you all, God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlos Howrigy, to be followed by Jose Moscataia and Javier Gonzalez.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Howrigy, and this is my mother. I'm a proud member of here, Local 814. I've been working at LAX for nearly two years. I'm a utility worker at the food court in Terminal 1, and my mother has been working at the parking in LAX for 10 years. She's a single mother, and she has races on this job. My brother Miguel has worked with me at Host for almost a year and a half. As you can see, my whole family has been connected to the airport, and my whole family has been impacted by the crisis. My sister is a sailor in the U.S. Navy. She's stationed on an amphibious ship which may be sent to the Middle East region. We support her, and we're scared for her. We already knew before September 11th that LAX was a target because of past threats and attempts to attack it, like on New Year's. We accepted the risk of working there. Today, security at LAX is everyone's responsibility. We want to do our part to take care of the customers and keep the airport running and secure, but now we may have no choice. My mom is the best-paid of the three of us. When the attack happened, my mom was the first to get laid off, along with hundreds of her coworkers. Now Host is about to lay off nearly 100 employees, there's a good chance that my brother and I will be among them. We don't have many options. If we lose our jobs, we will probably end up working at minimum wage. With the current economy and with all the layoffs at the airport, it will be difficult to find work. I cannot imagine how we will survive if this happens. We will lose the one car that we use for transportation, we will no longer be able to pay my brother's tuition. I don't know where the rent will come from. We will lose our health insurance. Our whole family is taking risks during this crisis, working at the airport and serving in the armed forces. Now we are being asked to sacrifice our jobs, our family's livelihood, and to make the airport safe. We are here today to ask you to look for every possible way to make the airport safe without sacrificing our jobs. We know that if you set your minds to it, you can find a way to do this. On behalf of my family, my coworkers, and our community, I ask you to do everything possible to make LAX safe and to save our jobs.
Thank you very much. Jose Moscataia, to be followed by Javier Gonzalez.
Good morning, honorable members of the city council. Mr. President, good morning to you. My name is Jose Moscata. I'm a special service agent at LAX International Airport, and even though I am not a pre-board screener, I do share in the responsibilities of security at the airport. I do report anything that's out of the ordinary in the airport, anything that looks threatening, anything that looks potentially hazardous. We share in the responsibilities. But I am here today to deliver an urgent plea of help to you regarding the jobs and livelihoods of all the security workers at LAX. We are dedicated people. We commit to this, and we do our best to provide the best service and safety to all the passengers, and anyone who goes through the security checkpoints, and anyone who enters the airport. I've been working in the airport for almost nine and a half years, and I'm very happy, and it's a wonderful environment. And basically, we have been fighting for better pay, benefits, and adequate staffing. We know our working conditions impact safety and security. Due to the low pay and bad working conditions, turnover is high. This means we often lose good, experienced screeners, and must hire and train new workers. Airport screeners are in the front line of defense in airport security, and we want to contribute to improving airport safety. Based on our experience, we have five suggestions on improving safety at airports. This includes better training, better inspection of staffing levels, federal supervision of our work, taking the responsibility of security out of the hands of airlines and subcontractors, and into the hands of the government. And finally, number five, and have pay and benefits increased to keep good workers in the airport. The solution is not firing us and bringing in federal marshals. This would only increase the number of layoffs that Los Angeles may soon see. We don't need to do this. We do a great job, but we can do a greater job if the system of training was better. If you give federal marshals the training we receive, they will do the same job. But if you give us the training marshals get, we will be able to provide high-quality security. I am here with the other security workers of LAX who share my concerns, as well as many other passenger service workers who are worried about their future and the threat of layoffs. We want the airport to be safer, and for all of us to return to work. We, the security staff, want to work to make security at LAX better. Whatever decision is made by the federal government, we want to be certain that the city of L.A. takes leadership in making sure that huge layoffs don't happen, and that any new jobs at LAX, security or other, give those of us working there now first opportunity at those jobs, federal or private. I would like to thank you very much, honorable city council members, for taking this matter into consideration, and I trust that you all will make the right decisions together that will lead our people to better lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council.
Javier Gonzalez, and Mr. Gonzalez, you will be the final speaker.
Thank you very much. My name is Javier Gonzalez. I'm a representative of the Service Employees International Union, Local 1877. We currently represent about 1,700 passenger service and other subcontracting employees such as janitors at the airport. In the last three years, we've also worked with an additional between 700 and 800 non-union passenger and security service workers at LAX. These include skycaps, baggage runners, wheelchair attendants, and a whole long list of other special services, passenger service that people do. We're already beginning to see some of the layoffs in some of the areas, and some of the smaller contracts, and they could potentially get as high as between 40% and 45%. So potentially, we're looking at, you know, losing about between 600 and 800 workers. The question of the screeners has been long talked about, been heavy discussions, both at the federal and at the local level. If those folks are laid off, that's between 700 and 800 additional people. We really, we want to present today something that we've been distributing nationwide to members of Congress, five points that Jose mentioned to help improve security at the airport. We, again, just want to reiterate the drastic impact that these layoffs may have on some of the poorest and working-class communities of Los Angeles, and we just want to urge and reiterate that whatever happens to these checkpoints, that if it goes, if it becomes federal, or if it stays private, that our workers here in L.A. that have been doing this job for years, in accordance or in the spirit of the worker-retention ordinance, stay on this job and receive the training that they need. And in addition, we hope to be able to work with you in any infrastructure changes or anything that happens, so we can get some of these passenger assistances out to wherever passengers are being rerouted. So I want to thank you very much for your support, and I'd like to leave this checklist for the staff.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 18. Before we open it up for council discussion, if we can call forward representatives from the department for comments in a presentation, and ask that we incorporate whatever actions the commission made yet today.
Good morning, President Padilla, members of the city council, and members of the public. I have here, my name is Lydia Cannard, Executive Director of Los Angeles World Airports. I have here today also Chief Bernard Wilson, head of our airport police at Los Angeles World Airport. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council for giving us the opportunity to brief you on September 19th, and to discuss the events following the September 11th tragedy, and Lawa's response, as coordinated with federal and other local agencies. I'm happy to report today that we continue operating our airports without any security breaches. As I discussed on September 19th, we are operating our airports under new security measures. They include the discontinuation of skycap curbside check-in for baggage, only passengers with tickets or ticket confirmations are now allowed past security checkpoints, a ban has been imposed on all knives and cutting instruments, and private vehicles cannot be parked now within 300 feet of terminal buildings. As a result of this last regulation, traffic in the LAX central terminal area, also known as the CTA, is restricted to only commercial vehicles such as taxis, shuttle buses, and courtesy vans, and parking structures in the CTA are now closed. The decision to keep the CTA closed to private vehicles was made after a careful security risk assessment. Bear in mind, LAX is unlike any other airport in the country. With the CTA parking structures closed, there would be total, with the CTA parking structures open, there would be total gridlock in the CTA, because passengers would have no place to park. LAX has more automobile traffic circling its central terminal area loop than any other airport in the country. Keeping the CTA clear of congestion is imperative to allow our law enforcement personnel immediate access to respond to the numerous bomb threats, suspicious packages, and other security alerts that occur on a daily basis at LAX since September 11th. Finally, allowing private cars in the CTA with the parking structures closed would make it virtually impossible to prevent vehicles from becoming unattended at our curbside, and thus posing a significant security risk. This measure to close the CTA to private vehicles is in keeping with Lawa's operational philosophy that existed before September 11th, and that is to exceed the minimum safety requirements of the FAA. We have taken many operational measures to greatly diminish any inconvenience by the CTA closure to the traveling public. The new passenger drop-off facility on Airport Boulevard is working extremely well with continuous free shuttle service to the CTA. We have also launched a public awareness campaign to ensure the word gets out about how to use LAX during this extraordinary time. We are also pleased that our mayor has participated in this effort through a series of public service announcements. Finally, this last Tuesday, our Board of Airport Commissioners voted unanimously to endorse, as prudent and necessary, all the security measures currently being taken at LAX. This action was taken after the commissioners received a 35-minute confidential security briefing by Chief Wilson and other FAA security personnel. The board also directed us to report back to the commission no later than October 2nd on the security issues related to alternatives in reopening the central terminary roadways and parking structures to private vehicles. Staff has already begun working very hard to evaluate the logistical and operational procedures that would allow us to save procedures that would allow us to safely reopen the CTA. One of the subsequent tragedies of September 11th is the toll being taken on the people whose jobs are linked to the aviation industry. Although the terrorist attacks occurred some 2,000 miles away, the impact of people here in Los Angeles is being felt deeply. Los Angeles International Airport is the third-largest airport in the world. Prior to September 11th, the economic engine known as LAX generated more than 400,000 jobs and $60 billion into the annual regional economy. Upon the reopening of LAX on September 13th, it became immediately apparent that LAX-related employment would be severely impacted. Virtually no group on the airport has been immune to layoff notices. Everyone from pilots, ticket agents, ramp workers, and flight attendants have been directly impacted. The immediate layoffs are also extend to our concessionaires, skycaps, ground service workers, and other airport-related work groups. The best data we have available today suggests the direct layoffs at LAX could total approximately 10,000 to 12,000 as of this time. Most of these jobs are among airlines and other airport tenants. However, outside the airport's boundaries, others are being impacted as well. The employees of hotels, rental car companies, custom brokers, freight forwarders, packagers, and caterers are also being significantly impacted. We conservatively estimate that by late fall, there could be as many as 40,000 people out of work or with reduced work schedules directly attributable to reduced operations at LAX. All of these job losses are attributable to four factors. Airlines have cut flight schedules on an average of 20% from pre-September 11th levels and have cut employment commensurately. Passenger volumes are down significantly across the country and certainly here in Los Angeles, there's no exception. The FAA has banned skycaps from checking luggage at curbside. Only ticketed passengers are permitted beyond the passenger screening points under the new FAA regulations. Since the vast majority of our concessions, 95% of our concessions at LAX are beyond the sterile areas of the passenger terminals, fewer people are now able to avail themselves of the concessions. Another important group impacted is our parking structure employees. As we developed our reopening plans, Lawwa was able to redeploy many of these workers to other locations within the airport. However, there remained a significant number of employees of Five Star Parking Company who could not be immediately reassigned. I'm pleased to report that as of yesterday, we have developed a redeployment plan and are working with Five Star to try to get as many of these employees back to work. Also, we are vigorously supporting legislation backed by Mayor Hahn to establish an employee job assistance program to help our displaced workers find new jobs. We are also working with state EDD, the county, and most importantly, our own Los Angeles City Community Development Department to assist us in finding employment opportunities for these displaced workers. Additionally, I've asked our Chief Operating Officer, Paul Green, to, to lead an economic impact assessment task force in conjunction with our air carriers and other tenants. We will be having a meeting with our tenant employers in early October. This task force will seek to minimize to the greatest extent the possible impact on men and women whose livelihoods depend on a prosperous airport. In fact, it is this task force that was instrumental in identifying alternative deployment areas that is allowing us to bring back some of these employees impacted by the closure of our parking lots. Unfortunately, the impact extends to the city department, Lawwa itself. With losses of $1.4 million per day due to higher security costs and lower revenues, we are undertaking a massive top-to-bottom review of our entire Lawwa operations. I may add that on September 19th, when I reported to you, the daily revenue drain was $1.8 million. That has now been reduced due to increased activity at the airport and reduced emergency operation cost. We have advised our Board of Airport Commissioners that we are taking actions to minimize this deficit, and these include the freeze, immediate freeze of all hiring of Lawwa employees except new security personnel, the reduction of total Lawwa staff positions by approximately 9%, the deferral of all and non-essential equipment purchases and construction projects not related to safety or security, among many other measures. Although these cost-cutting actions are extensive, we do not anticipate at this time any direct Lawwa layoffs. This is a very painful time for all of us in the aviation industry. The fact that these job losses are out of our immediate control gives us no comfort. Real people's lives are being turned upside down by the terrible events of September 11th. But we at Lawwa are unequivocally committed and convinced that the aviation industry, like our country, will come through this dark period stronger and better than ever. We are certainly doing everything and anything to hasten that recovery, and I thank you all for the opportunity to present this before you today.
Thank you, Ms. Kennard. Let me say again, I know it's been a tough two weeks for you, not only responding to the incidents on the 11th and all the work that's gone into getting the airport back up and running, but certainly the issues of employees, both directly and indirectly at the airport, is very critical to the city and to our economy and not a light task before you and the rest of the commission, so we appreciate your effort thus far on that, and we'll be continuing to work together. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And may I just say thank you to all of the people who showed up today at City Hall to express your concerns. You know, it's, I'm always particularly grateful for people who, who take off work and sacrifice a day's work of pay to come down to the City Hall to testify, but it is even more touching to have those of you who now do not have a job, that you still took the time to come down here and express your concerns about you, your families, and your futures. And I am particularly troubled by what has happened. I don't think any of us ever believed what happened September 11th would, would really translate to such an incredible economic hit that we have taken here in Los Angeles. To think that up to 12,000 people will be laid off eventually as a result of this, with over $50 million of annual income lost, particularly here in the Los Angeles area. And I've been told many of these workers are from South Central Los Angeles, many of them are from the district that I represent, and I'm particularly concerned about this. And one of the things we did in our, in our committee, which you have your report, our report before you today, is we have asked for the Community Development Department, particularly through the Workforce Investment Board, to begin immediately working on a plan to address the laid-off workers so we can begin job retraining and job relocation. I compare this, colleagues, to what happened to the South Bay in the early 90s when we took the incredible hit from the aerospace industry changing directions. And if it was not for the, the Workforce Investment Boards that began retraining aerospace workers, I think the Southern California economy would have never recovered, and I compare that to this. There is an urgency right here, and I guess what I want to make sure is that we continue to make sure that the security measures we do feel we need to implement for safety takes into account, into account the impact that it has on concessions, all the businesses that are spin-off businesses of the airline industry, because I believe first and foremost, safety is key. Unless people feel safe flying, I don't see a recovery in the airline industry or in our airport industry. So we must make sure that these security measures we are putting in place ultimately are addressing the real threat of people flying on airlines. And I would just like an answer, do you foresee that this will be permanent? That no longer will we allow private cars ever again to be on the loop and never again will be, we allow parking in the, in the inner structure? And if you do feel like that is permanent, what can we do to address maybe relocations of concessions, maybe putting security checkpoints beyond concessions to the, to the gate? Have we discussed, you know, a still a need? I, I've been hearing complaints that there is still a need for skycaps, that those who are being dropped off at the outer parking lot still need help with their luggage, and maybe we have outer terminal check-in or, I mean, I just want to make sure that if you think these measures are, are, are necessary to the safety of flying passengers, then what can we do to rethink what we've done all these years in terms of having family members accompany their families, participating, availing themselves of the concessions? And I'd like to know how, how we are addressing this issue.
Councilwoman Hahn, if I could first address the issue about the skycaps, we're very happy to report that many of the skycaps have been redeployed to our drop-off and pickup parking lots and are working. We've also, they've also been redeployed to the baggage area, so many of them are being, are being employed. We have no indication as to the time in which these new security measures will be lifted, if ever, from the FAA. One of the dilemmas that we face at LAX, of course, is that our parking structures are, are within that 300-foot rule. Other airports have received and have invoked a waiver of that rule. Because of the configuration of our terminals, the loop road, and the fact that it was never designed for the 100,000 cars that circle our CTA on a daily basis, we felt, at least in these early days, it was prudent for us to keep the central terminal area closed for all the reasons that I've mentioned earlier.
May I just say, that, that is though our, our measure, that is not an FAA mandated.
The 300-foot rule is definitively an FAA rule.
Not the parking, but the circling.
That you cannot park within 300 feet of a terminal building. That is an FAA rule, and it is an enforced rule. However, there is a procedure for securing a waiver. We have not invoked the waiver at this particular point, particularly in these early days when LAX remains in a very high-security alert position. I don't know if Chief Wilson wants to expound upon that.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. I rise today because I think that it's important for all of us, and I know that we share this, to get back to normalcy as soon as possible and as prudently as possible way. While I respect much of what we need to do and what we anticipate, that we, we feel that we need to do in terms of security, there are, of course, loopholes that every person, when they logically think this out, I'm sure you've heard, says to each one of us in our daily lives, why is it that taxis can go through but other cars can't when clearly somebody could have just as dangerous explosive elements in a taxi, et cetera? And I know that, that these things are not new, but all of us have to pledge to try to work as prudently but also swiftly as possible to go back to normalcy. I would really urge us to relook at that waiver right now and to move on that, and I don't say that lightly. I know the security issues, but the economic impact is clearly right now, basically, the victory is there. The terrorists have, have achieved their goals if we also get the people out of work. As the Chair of the Economic Development and Employment Committee, I too have been working on a lot of these things that the mayor and that Councilmember Hahn is talking about with the WIB Board, have also contacted the Small Business Administration for some of the concessionaires and other folks to make sure that there are loans to get people by. I also lobbied, and I was glad, as I mentioned before, that the governor eased up the restrictions on getting unemployment insurance so that the week-long that usually takes, people can get that right away, and I think that was very important. I also think that all of us and all the people that are watching should really think about flying and getting back in the air. And last night, I went online and I actually bought a ticket at a time when there's an element in each one of us that doesn't want to fly, and yet we need to fly. We need to be there, we need to make sure these jobs are there, we need to get back on with our life in a vacuum before there's anything else that's going on in terms of some of the security issues, we need to do that. And lastly, we're getting, the bailout, the billions of dollars that we are getting for the airline industries, I feel, I know this isn't your policy area, but I feel like we should go on record saying something about this. This is a bailout for an industry that was already having a lot of financial troubles. And my feeling, listening to what's been happening so far, is that the first priority has not been the workers. I want to ask the airline industries how many of their top executives are taking pay cuts or being furloughed. I want to ask the airlines how they are spending that money because there are openings for them economically to take advantage of this situation, and I want to make sure that those of us who are elected by the public to represent workers first and foremost are making sure that airlines think about the workers first and not last. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If I can ask the crowd to maybe cheer and applaud quietly here, we're going to try to get through the meeting here, and certainly the actions you're asking us to take are very important. There are several members who wish to speak, so in the interest of moving forward with the work, I'd like to ask for your patience. Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I actually have a number of things to say, lots of which have already been said, so I'll try not to repeat those. I want to start by congratulating the staff at the airport. Ms. Kennard, as the General Manager, whatever we call you, Executive Director, and Chief Wilson for the work that's been done by the safety people. I had the somewhat frightening experience of arriving home to a bomb scare at LAX, and I want to say that everything, it turns out luckily to have been only a scare, but it's pretty scary all the same, and I was very impressed with the speed and efficiency and care with which everybody working at the airport took care of those few travelers who were actually in the airport. I think that you have done a tremendous job under tremendously frustrating and trying circumstances. All of us feel just awful anyway about what's happened to our country, and I grew up in New York, so I take it all very personally, but I really think you guys have done a great job. Nevertheless, we all know that it's hurt a lot of people, and it's obviously particularly hurting people whose jobs have been at the airport and whose jobs have been disrupted by this. But I think we need to remember as we look toward a solution to those problems that the economic trends were already there. What happened on September 11th just pushed everything kind of over the cliff, and we need a solution. There is no solution that occurs only at the airport. Even if we were to open everything at the airport tomorrow, business is down. The airline industry is, is in the tank. They are, there are going to be massive dislocations and layoffs in, there already have been, there were before the, before September 11th. Some of these layoffs, we can't control and we can't undo, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that and not expect the airport to be able to work a miracle in the face of what's going on in the national and international economy. I see my button flashing here, but I got two more quick points. The economic dislocation that people at the airport are facing is bigger than the airport as well, and certainly all the workers I've talked to in the last few days have made that point very eloquently. So we do, in fact, need a much, we need to see this as a city issue, not an airport issue. The airport is a piece of it, but only a piece, and there are several, there's an item in our committee report, and there are a couple of motions around this morning that build on that. I also want to congratulate you on the work you've done without waiting for council directives or commission directives to try to cushion the blow. I think that it's unusual in management to be that concerned about workers, and we, I appreciate it, and I hope that we are able to do even more than we've done. But the last point I want to make is that I think, and then I have to answer two things Mr. Garcetti said. What's happened in the last couple of weeks is we've demonstrated that the airport can run very efficiently without cars in the central terminal area, and in fact, it's not the passengers we're hearing the complaints from. Passengers are perfectly willing, as far as I can tell, certainly everyone I've met with in the community's been perfectly willing to spend a little longer getting to a flight, and it turns out it actually isn't a little longer getting to a flight. If you drove through there when we had 1,500 cars an hour going around the place, you know that it's a whole lot quicker to have somebody drop you off, you get in a cab or a hotel shuttle or an airport shuttle, and you go right to your terminal.
Ms. Galanter.
I know, just hold on. Mr. Garcetti made two points. He wanted to go back to normal. The definition of normal is not the same as it used to be. There is no going back to the normal we had before. It doesn't exist anymore. Just don't think about it. I agree with you that the bailout is a misguided effort to, to solve this problem. I wasn't here when you all voted to add to the motion that I had asked somebody else to bring in. You voted to add encouraging the feds to bail out the airlines. I think that was a mistake. I don't know why you did it, but you did. If we're going to throw federal money at transportation, now is the time to think about trains. In the meantime, where we want federal money is to help us with the workers who are displaced from these jobs to make sure that there are other jobs for them to go into. And I just want to point out, I think it was yesterday, we approved five- think it was yesterday, we approved Five Stars Parking Contract in Hollywood. They, that's the same parking operator at the airport. They can help us, too.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to tell the chief and Ms. Kennard that I know how hard you've been working over these past several weeks on behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles. And we thank you for your service in that regard. I do think that when you cut through all of it, the members of the council share your twin goals of, number one, making LAX the safest airport in the United States, and number two, ensuring that LAX once again becomes a thriving airport. I think we all agree, and it's along the lines of what Ms. Galanter just said, that the new reality in the United States is that economic viability will follow security. Security has to be number one. And that in terms of the long-term economic prospects of the concessionaires, of the workers, of the airlines, of the industry, for the consumer, for the consumer, for the flying public to get back into LAX and to do what Mr. Garcetti wants us so correctly to do, security has to come first. And so that's why I want you to know that, from my perspective, when it comes to the close calls these days, I want us to err on the side of security, because I think that is, in the long run, the most important economic strategy. Now, in that regard, I want my colleagues to know that I just introduced an amendment to this matter, which is on your tables as Item 18A. And it's a matter that's crafted with the cooperation of Lawwell, with the backing of the mayor. And what it would do is put the council on record as supporting the needed federal measures that we have to have, so that we federalize the security function, so that we turn over the FAA security functions to a federal law enforcement agency, and that we look to the federal government for the proper forms of reimbursement, for the proper sort of economic disaster relief assistance. And it's something that's under debate in Congress. I think all of us, and Ms. Galanter, the Chair of the committee, seconded the motion here. I think it's something we can all come together and support. What I'd like to have you comment on is what additionally you think we can be doing in the security area above the floor that is set by the federal government in that respect?
Councilman, there's a number of things that we're doing. We're trying to think outside the box on a far grander scale than we ever have done before. I should point out that we are getting directives from the FAA on a daily basis. I received two yesterday, two today. And what happened when this incident first occurred two weeks ago, the focus was on airplanes. And over the period of time, the focus is now going toward airports. Talk about sky marshals is all well and good, but I think that everyone would agree that stopping a hijacking before it starts is better than stopping it after it's already happened. So the focus is going to be on airports from this point on. And we're getting, as I mentioned, measures every day. One arrived this morning, for example. We can no longer have lockers behind screening. We have not had lockers in front of screening at LAX since the mid-'70s, because we had an incident out there. Now, all the lockers are going to be gone. This is going to impact the traveling public as well. I expect these changes to come on on a daily basis. What I, what I'm trying to do, though, is I think I know where the FAA is going. They're looking around the world to see what's happening. And I think that what would be better for us would be to short-circuit that process. If we already know they're going to do things that are in place in Europe and in Asia, well, we already know what those measures are, and we can look at those measures ourselves. And what my intention would be, would be to have those measures already in place. When the FAA came to me and said, "Do it," I could respond and say, "It's already halfway done. All we need to do is implement it." One case in point is, we're trying to look at a creative way to get our concessions back in operation. One of the council members mentioned move the passenger screening checkpoint, which would be a good idea, except that most of our concessions are in a position now where they're too close to adjacent gates. In Amsterdam, at Skeeple Airport, they actually have two screening stations, one that allows people to go into the concourse, and a second one closer to the gates. And we could implement something like that at LAX. It would be a little more staff-intensive. That's the bad news. The good news is, it would be very, very effective from a security standpoint. And the even better news is, it would make even more jobs for the passenger screeners who need those jobs. I'd like to mention also, while I'm talking about the screeners, that I don't think anyone has made any mention of making the passenger screeners be deputy marshals or federal employees. Every piece of discussion I've heard from my counterparts around the country and with the FAA and federal agencies is to have federal oversight of that. I think the model we're looking at is similar to what the marshals have in the federal courthouses, a contract security force that is overseen by the marshal service, but not actually marshals doing the screening. So I think that those fears would be misplaced right now. I also want to point out that our passenger screeners at LAX are excellent. With the living wage ordinance, we do have, I think, a higher quality and a higher caliber of screener at LAX. And I'd like to point out that the Passenger Screener of the Year for the entire country in 1999 was a Los Angeles International Airport Passenger Screener. And we value those people as important parts of the security picture at LAX. I think that, to answer the question, though, what we can expect, I have people right now literally doing two things, working very, very hard on two plans. One plan is to investigate fully the potential for opening the central terminal area to some degree of traffic to possibly include the parking structures. This decision has to be made in the light of taking all the security concerns into account, all the FAA restrictions into account, and ultimately, you know, safety of the public into account. But we are looking at that. We've actually been working very hard on that since we started this. It's coming to a head, because we have a deadline by our commission to come up with a report, six days away. The other thing is, I do have people looking at measures we can use for the long term that will take into account the fact that the FAA is very busy right now, and we can't wait for them to tell us what to do. We have to look at things ourselves, and we know what to do. We're trilingual. We speak COP, we speak aviation, and we speak aviation security. And we know what to do. We can do that without guidance from the FAA at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I want to join those who have appropriately acknowledged the hard work of the head of the airports, Lawwell, Ms. Kennard, as well as the chief of airport police. And it cannot be overstated how much we appreciate the leadership that you have provided over the past several weeks to cause some sense of normalcy to be restored. We haven't achieved that yet. But in fact, we do know that we will get there with a steady hand and a sense of sobriety as we face the challenges that lie ahead. Those challenges are twofold. They are security in nature that has garnered the attention of many of us, but they also have implications for the negative impacts on employees. Much has been stated about that. The Energy, Commerce, and Natural Resources Committee has spoken to that, and we take acknowledgement. But I think our challenge today is to balance our security needs and job stability. And therefore, I brought in 18B. It is joined by several members of the council who want us to, as a city, be mindful of both the increasing level of security at public facilities, specifically the airport, and mitigating the human impact that these measures will have. There are several amending actions here, and I wish to just briefly call them to the attention of the members of the council. We want to direct the Department of Personnel with the assistance and coordination of the Community Development Department to immediately initiate a comprehensive inventory of all vacant positions within the city and create an expedited process for filling these positions with priority given to employees who have been displaced at the Los Angeles International Airport. The next item would then be to have the airport to include in the newly established Economic Impact Assessment Task Force, city, the appropriately designated city representatives, and the representative of, representatives of employee unions in the work that lies ahead. A lot does, and it seems to me, an inclusive and comprehensive approach is the order of the day. We also suggest that the, that Lawwell be requested to carefully balance the economic well-being of the airports, employees, and employers with the need for greater security measures as the further discussions about the master plan is revised in the incoming months. Mr. President, members of the council, the Community Development Department, and the Workforce Investment Board should be directed to report back to the city council with regard to any additional resources that are necessary to provide comprehensive job training and placement services to those displaced employees at the International Airport. And finally, that the Los Angeles City Council support any state and/or federal legislation that seeks to provide financial relief and job placement services for businesses and employees that have been harmed by the catastrophic impact and economic repercussions of the September 11 terrorist attack. I submit that, Mr. President, as an amendment to the report that's before us, and would hope that we take that in the spirit in which it's intended, that is, to balance security needs and job security. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Appreciate this particular motion, because among many things that it accomplishes, it formalizes what the commission had agreed to yesterday. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Well, the terrorists, the criminals, have been successful in crippling America airspace, putting many thousands of people out of work. They got their message across, and it woke us up, the fact that it can happen. And I question, if this happened in the harbor, would we then shut down the harbor? If this happened at some other public facility, would we shut that down? Would shut down Union Station with the trains? I think we need to stand tall and united and say, "We will have adequate security. We will not displace thousands of people from employment, from the airline industry. We built a world airport which functions to serve not only this area in passenger and tourism, but in commerce." And I think that when we look at the security measures, which are intense at this time, we need to modify to what is reasonable. And I support everything that my colleagues have said. And my heart goes out to the people who are getting the pink slips and the discipline of the group here this morning and this afternoon for your composure. We hear your message. We hear your cries for help. And that's what we're here to do, to respond to that. I asked the airport authority, "We have one flyaway in the San Fernando Valley, a Woodley Flyaway Terminal. Can we establish some more of those throughout this region and take some of our employees and put them at those locations?" I don't know if we have screening at the flyaway at Van Nuys, but can we establish some more flyaways, relocate some of our employees, have screening there, have them board the buses, have the buses come into LAX, and accommodate the travelers? And I know it's going to take a period of time before we gear back up. And I know that the LAPD is staffing the airport with additional security. But the whole focus needs to come in a reasonable fashion. And I think, as the chief said, work out of the box. Can we do something to accommodate the passengers, to accommodate the employees, by establishing, other than the remote parking lots, some other remote locations in this region to bring more passengers forward to your facility?
Councilman Zine, actually, before the September 11th attack, our staff was focused on expanding our flyaway program, because it afforded us a tremendous amount of good ground transportation access to the airport and high occupancy vehicles. Since the September 11th, obviously, we have made that a top priority, because we think that not only does it afford the public transportation value, it also affords new employment opportunities for displaced workers. As an immediate step, our commission on Tuesday was informed that we have immediate plans to expand the Van Nuys flyaway on a temporary basis. And as many of you know, we have some more long-term plans for additional construction out there to expand the flyaway.
My question was, the west side, the east side, north of LAX, north of the San Fernando Valley, can we put something in place to put some of these folks to work and at the same time accommodate the travelers to the airport in a short, in a short expedition period of time?
Absolutely. We had, we had already been in negotiations with locations downtown, in East LA, and in the South Bay, and an additional in the North Valley, additional location in the North Valley. And of course, these are now higher priority than they had even before September 11th.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. There's a lot being said today, a lot of issues, a lot of recommendations. It's not, still not clear to me, what discretion does the FAA have versus what discretion does the city have? What I'd hate to find out is that we lose our ability to support our workers, our operations, because we've lost control of discretion on how we treat our operations and our sense of security. I was just listening to the representatives who are saying, "Why don't you train us as federal marshals? We can be just as effective." So can you comment on that? That's my first point, and please all my time.
Let me start. Councilman Reyes, unfortunately, we are in a peculiar regulatory environment at airports and always have been. We are owned by the city of Los Angeles, but regulated by this federal government through the FAA. All the measures that I indicated today are federally mandated regulations. They are not optional. They are not discretionary. They're something that we must do, and they're being done at all airports. There are, as I mentioned before, some, some things that we can put into place to try to minimize the impact on both employment and revenue, and we're working very hard to do that. But again, we are under direct order from the FAA. There will be another series of regulations, we believe, coming out at the beginning of next month, which will, and as Chief Wilson also indicated, on a daily basis, we get new regulations. So our world is changing dramatically on a day-to-day basis.
Just expanding on that a little bit, Councilman, if we do not do what the FAA says, they can decertify the airport. They can literally close it down if we just disobey one of the rules. The relationship is, there's a federal security manager at LAX. He's a full-time security manager. I'm the airport security coordinator for LAX International Airport. He is empowered to give me instructions. I must follow those instructions. Otherwise, we're decertified.
So are we in a position, then, to delineate where their discretion ends and where ours begin? We can support our workers in these trying times?
We're in a position now to argue, discuss with the FAA how these things can be implemented. And I have done that. I should point something out, too. We had a federal security manager at the very beginning stages of this emergency who was, is no longer with us. We've had, we have a new one in place now, who has had prior experience at LAX. And I think the relationship with the FAA now is a lot better. So we are in a position now, when they give us a directive, I'm able to sit down with this person, one-to-one. We close the door, just the two of us, and we discuss what it means for this airport. And we are looking at the impact of the workers, but it is absolutely one of the biggest concerns I do have, because we have to be very conscious of the, we understand where the money comes from. The money is needed to run the airport department as well. So we're very conscious of the revenue loss and the job loss.
And don't get me wrong. I do not want to compromise security at all. It's just that, once you start losing discretion and control, then we're on a reactive mode as opposed to proactive in trying to contain the damage economically on our communities. So I'm a little hesitant about the motion on 18A, where we're kind of giving away some of our discretion, some of our roles in these various functions. And I just think we need to look at it a little bit more clearly. On another point, what's the salary range of the folks that are being impacted? What's the range in terms of, when you look at sky cap and security, what's the range we're talking about?
Virtually, all of our employees on airport are subject to living wage. So that is the floor. And certainly, there are many more employees at much higher pay grades that are also being affected. Pilots are being affected, mechanics, people at very, very high pay wages as well.
Councilmembers, many of those, let's be blunt, people will live where they can. And so when you look at rental and you look at housing, folks can afford only so much. So folks making anywhere between 13,000 to 31,000 a year, and they include functions such as cashiers, assemblers, janitors, receptionists. A decent rental facility, house, unit, is out of reach for them. Home ownership, just to obtain home ownership, if you're looking at police officers, 45,000 a year, you're looking at marketing managers, 32,000, or these are averages, systems analysts, 40,000. They're barely at that point where they can even afford to buy a home. My point being is that I'd like to make a friendly amendment to 18B and include the housing department. Look at all of the programs the housing department has to offer, so that the individuals here whose homes are at stake, you know, where they live, whether they're renters or homeowners, how can the city support and supplement their efforts, so that in this period, when they're getting their pink slips, they're being displaced, they don't also find themselves homeless? If you find where these people can live, you're going to find that they're going to be in districts that surround the central area and the peripheries of the other districts around the harbor and in the valley. So I would like to make a friendly amendment, that we can include the housing department, its services, and whatever it can do to support the workers in these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Holden.
President, members, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank Lydia and the state general manager and the other members of the airport for locking down the airport after the crisis in New York, making it completely safe and secure for those who were going to fly to fly, for people working there to be safe in their work environment. It's rough, it's not normalized yet, but it will be. But those potential terrorists have been served notice that the employees and the management, the airport, L.A. World Airport, is not going to concede to them at all. Very important. The president gave some very, very powerful and impressive words in his speech, and he made it clear to the American people that we all are going to do a little suffering. We all are, so expect it. That's what we end today. A real contest is whether or not democracy will survive or not. Liberty as we've known it in the past, freedom as we've known it in the past may not be what we can expect in the near future, but it will come back the way it was. I'm going to suggest that, Mr. Thomas, in your motion, when you talked about the program to consider the displaced employees, let's be quite specific about that. Let's use the word bailout, the same terminology that they used to bail out the airline industry. You understand what I'm saying? I want a friendly amendment. And the bailout program for displaced workers may be retraining, may be benefits, may be service pay, as we're doing for the airline industry. So we therefore are going to memorialize Congress and the President of the United States to include his legislative program, that is, city's legislative program, to provide those opportunities for displaced employees, and we use the same terminology, bailout program. I would anticipate that, in the very near future, those who are in charge of domestic security, the new cabinet that's been established by the President of the United States, would have to include, inducted into a parent military organization, baggage collectors, handlers, those who of course screen the baggage that they go through screening. Everyone is directly associated with the airport in any kind of way should be sworn into duty and given direct orders of conduct to provide tight security. Background checks? I mean, in the aerospace industry, everybody's got a clearance called security clearance, high-security clearance, you know what I'm talking about, right? And there should be security clearance for each and every employee, so that they can be conscious of what their job is, what their duties are, in terms of providing security. There should be screening of them before they can go screen. And I think that part of our legislative program should be just that. And I want to, once you, Ms. Kennard, I want to commend you once again for a job well done, and you two chiefs at the airport. Now, we've been inconvenienced.
Mr. Holden.
And I was going to talk as much as Mr. Reyes.
Well, then ask a question so they can answer you. That's how he got that much time.
Oh, Mr. Reyes, would you ask the question for me so they can answer and I'll still be standing? That's all right. All right, Mr. President says my time is up, and I'm going to abide by his notice and sit down.
There's a first for everything. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I rise in support of the employee bailout as it's been so labeled by my colleague, Mr. Holden, and the motion introduced by Mr. Ridley Thomas. The questions I have on the motion are not directed towards the content, but really geared towards our personnel department and CDD in terms of, do we need to supplement your budget to give you personnel to expedite this? Because if we're going to do this right, we need to start having teams in both your departments working now, and this was not anticipated in the fiscal budget that we presented last year. So the question I have is, do we need to do that now? Do we just empower you to do it? I would like to place a friendly amendment to the motion, Mr. Ridley Thomas, that we get a full stash report within a week back here in council as to where we're, how we're progressing on this bailout, because if we don't keep our focus on this, it could slowly slip away. So I want to make sure that we get a report within a week, because this is something that every day makes a difference to the lives of these workers, and I want to make sure that we're pushing forward. So, does Mr. Diden want to answer the question on, do we need to make any fiscal decisions today, or do we want to let it be absorbed within the budget? Do we need to make any fiscal decisions to facilitate this today, or just give them the charge to move forward? Okay, we'll just give them the charge. And those are the only things. I just want to stand in support of all the employees and make sure that we try to find a safe landing for them during this crisis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be brief, and I'm sorry that I neglected to also thank the two of you when I was making my earlier comments, follow the work you've done. In some ways, law was example of not laying off, I think is an example that airlines should take to mind that sometimes through very difficult times and internal restructuring, by everybody biting off a little piece, you can keep all workers there. Councilmember Wax had to leave, but I'm introducing a motion that he originally drafted that's being seconded by Councilmember Hahn, which Councilmember Ridley Thomas's motion gets at future legislation, but in terms of the exact bailout that's already occurred, moves that the city, through its appropriate representatives in Washington, DC, formally transmits to the President and the Congress of the United States, our request that a significant and appropriate portion of any relief funds be designated for assistance to and in support of workers in or connected to the airline industries whose jobs are lost or in jeopardy, so that some of that, those billions of dollars, will actually be directed towards the workers. And I urge your support, and I thank you for the other motions.
Mr. Reyes.
Just very quickly, I wanted to make sure we don't forget about the housing department in reference to Councilman Pacheco's suggestion that we give them the wherewithal we will make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, question for you, Mr. Weiss. On your amending motion, we had discussions about the first part of the amending motion. Actually, I see Ms. Galanter bracing to the microphone. Ms. Galanter.
Not on here, all right. As the seconder of a whole bunch of the amending motions that came in, I'd like to second Mr. Reyes's friendly amendment to Mr. Ridley Thomas's am I motion, in case anybody didn't. And with respect to Mr. Weiss's motion, which I also seconded, I'd like to offer an amendment in the, first, this is the one with the whole list of things we're asking the feds. And you'll notice that the first one is to add the passenger and baggage screening function to an existing federal agency or create a new agency for this purpose. I'd like to amend our list there, so that we are also asking the feds, whichever way they choose to go about it, if they do one of those things, to give priority to people who have worked as screeners for the jobs and the training. And I say that for several reasons. First of all, these are people who know how to do it. Second of all, they need jobs. And third of all, given the history of the contractors who hire the screeners, I think that the screeners would be a whole lot better off as federal employees. It's a better benefit package, generally better salaries, more stable jobs. I don't know if we can get this or not, but it certainly seems reasonable to me that we should ask it, so that we are doing the best we can, not only to retain jobs for people who have worked in this absolutely vital function, but also, in fact, to improve the jobs that we would retain them in. So, Mr. Weiss, if that's okay with you, we'll tag that on.
I have no objection to the proposed amendment.
And if I need to write that in simple language, somebody will tell me, otherwise I think you've got the sense of it here. Thank you.
So that's, thank you to Mr. Weiss and Ms. Galanter, that's a friendly amendment to 18A. Madam Clerk, we have item 18, we have amending motions 18A and 18B before us.
Terminology is bailout, did you get a clarification on that? Your motion, that's part of legislative intent, right?
The intent is not just any appropriate portion of any relief funds, but of the bailout package.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have item 18, 18A and 18B in writing, and a couple of verbal motions from the floor. Ask for your assistance in clarifying the series of votes we're about to take.
Okay. Item, you would need to take a vote on Ms. Galanter's, it would be in chronological order, so Ms. Galanter's motion would be the first one to be voted on.
If it was a friendly amendment accepted by Mr. Weiss, isn't it just incorporated into his motion?
Do you wish to take all the other friendly amendments also with 18B? Okay.
Mr. Ridley Thomas approves.
Yeah.
18B as amended.
Then it'll simplify your life a lot.
Vote on 18B first, and then 18A, and then all the 18.
Right, so it's 18B with all the friendly amendments, then 18A.
18A.
Everybody clear on that? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 18B as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
18B as amended is approved. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 18A as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item 18A as amended is approved, and now one final vote on item 18, and it's, I believe that was.
It could be amendment to C.
That was an amendment to B.
Amendment to B.
So now we have all the amendments written and verbal incorporated into one big package. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 18. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item 18 is approved. Thank you very much, again, to all the employees and staff at Los Angeles International Airport. Fourth with on that. Colleagues, and thank you for your patience. We've had a request to take the public comment period for today's meeting out of order to accommodate a few speakers who were not afforded the opportunity to speak in committee this morning relative to an item that will appear on our Friday agenda. So I appreciate a couple of council members having worked to minimize the number of speakers and the time that we shall allot. Without objection, let's take public comment for today's meeting next. And let me make an announcement as we call up the speakers. The council calls forward first Sweet Alice Harris, to be followed by Tina Choi. And if I have everybody's attention, let me also announce that the public hearing for the Housing Committee, the Tefra hearing, will be scheduled for next Tuesday in room 1010 in City Hall at 10:00 a.m. I repeat, the Tefra hearing will be this Tuesday in room 1010 of City Hall at 10:00 a.m. Ms. Sweet Alice Harris, if I can call you forward at this time? Ms. Tina Choi, you will follow.
Good morning to the city, councilmen and the councilwoman, my sister and my brother. I've come today to ask you all to, and you have a package, I hope you have it with you, if not, you'll have it Friday, but we asked in that you support the project that they're, Vista, out by the beach, and it's the low-income house, a project that has set aside low-income housing for the low-income, which I don't think has happened, not in that area, and that's what make it so unique, because we always forced to live in a certain area if your income is a certain amount. And this time, it has made a difference, and I am grateful for that. I'll be working with that project to make sure it does what it said it will do, to make sure that the low-income people will be in there, and to make sure that they are trained, because in bringing a low-income into an area, sometime you have to train them as well as you have to train the upper-income that lives in the low-income, and we understand that because we do that all the time. And so, again, I would like for you all to support it. I'd be here Friday, but I'm going to New York.
I appreciate it.
And see what I can do there. But take a look at that, please, and give us that chance on housing.
Thank you for coming today. Ms. Tina Choi, to be followed by Charlotte Austin Jordan.
Good afternoon, honorable council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Tina Choi, and I am the Vice President of Public Affairs at Playa Vista. Playa Vista is currently one of the largest redevelopment projects in the city of Los Angeles. However, it is also an example of balancing responsible development to address one of the critical needs in Los Angeles and the city, housing while at the same time maintaining sensitivity to the environment. It is a project that will restore our remaining Bayona wetlands, and it is a project that will turn what was land once used for heavy industrial activity and agricultural purposes into a revitalized site that will provide much-needed housing and jobs to our city. In a time when the city is crying out for much-needed housing, job creation, and open space, Playa Vista is one of the solutions to the challenges facing our city of Los Angeles. SCAC projects 6.7 million more people in this immediate region by the year 2010. The Los Angeles region is looking at, for every six jobs created, only one housing unit being built. We're facing an immediate crisis in housing, and more specifically, as Sweet Alice mentioned, a lack of affordable housing. What you all have presented before you is a recommendation from the city's Department of Housing for the authorization to apply for $9.56 million of SIDLAG bonds for Fountain Park Apartments Phase 1 and 2. This is not a public subsidy. We incur the full responsibility of payback. Repayback is not an obligation of the city, state, or federal government. There is no fiscal impact to the city's general fund.
May I ask you to wrap up, please?
Sure. By authorizing these bonds, you allow us to build affordable housing in the west side of Los Angeles, specifically Fountain Park. 375 units are affordable. 53% of this project will be affordable housing. Rental rates, one-bedroom, $545 compared to a market rate of $1,700 to $1,950. In addition, in closing, affordable housing at Fountain Park will be designed to be seamless. Every unit will be integrated and mixed in to allow for seamless diversification and to encourage integration. Our quality, affordable quality units will be comparable to market units as well. So please allow us this opportunity, because if we don't use this bond authority to do affordable housing in LA, it reverts back to the state and we lose it to another municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Charlotte Austin Jordan, to be followed by Robert Roy Vanderhooch.
Good morning. My name is Charlotte Austin Jordan, and I'm Executive Director for Save Our Future. And I came to talk today about this project that Playa Vista has on the table. I myself was a recipient who had to use that, a housing program to assist my family. I have five children in my home, three of my own, and two children that I care for out of foster care. Through that project, I was able to take care of the basic necessity needs that my children needed. That was food. I was able to provide clothing. My children's self-esteem was up because I was able to afford them the things in life that they felt that their peers were receiving. This project works. Today, my title is Executive Director. I use that system to educate myself and to educate my children. Please vote yes for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Roy Vanderhooch, to be followed by Peggy Forster.
Greetings, City Council, and greetings, Mr. President. My name is Roy Vanderhooch, I live in Silmar, in the north part of the city of LA. I live in Silmar, in the north part of the city of L.A. I live three blocks between two district boundaries, and I like to ask first, if you are on a boundary and you're three blocks from one council member to the next, do you have to have, do you get to have input on the next district, or does district prerogative influence, for example, what happens? Because I went to Hubbard Street School, which was not in my council district, but I lived within that region of the school, and Boy Scouts meetings were held at another school, and I was in that district. It's just a point about, I hope you'll think about this in terms of not being in your district. For most of you, this project of Playa Vista is not in your district. I am with the Sierra Club. I'm a marine biologist and a geographer, and have worked for the federal government for ten years. And the Sierra Club objects to any further tax-exempt bonds or direct subsidies going to the development that is currently destroying what's left of the Biona Wetlands ecosystem. We're definitely in favor of housing projects and low-income housing, but this is a false trail by the Playa Vista Corporation. I'd like you to think that, in California, we have 1 million births per year. That comes out, if you'd break it down to 365 per day, 365 days in a year, that's 3,000 births a day. Comes out to 63 births an hour in Southern California. This project, and many others, are just not going to help, and we need more genuine planning for the future. And one of those things means having more parks. And this park that they are proposing is inadequate and very small. The Sierra Club has filed an amicus brief that's going to be heard, we think, in front of the Supreme Court this Friday. The Supreme Court will be making a decision whether to hear this case and send this back to the federal government, and the Army Corps of Engineers, to be heard all over and start over again under a NEPA process that was inadequate under the city's program, starting about eight years ago. A federal judge, the Honorable Ronald Lew, agreed that the Army Corps of Engineers erred, and this decision was reversed last year, and now the Supreme Court will decide. Councilmember Galanter is often quick to mention that bond money does not affect the general fund. However, tax-exempt bonds translate to a loss to the state and federal treasury, including your need for airport jobs. Keep that in mind as you think about...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Peggy Forster, to be followed by Tom Ponton.
Mr. President, and members of the council, thank you for permitting us to speak to you today. Your flexibility and consideration for our schedules is much appreciated. I have some materials that I would like to hand to the members of the committee, and thank you so much. My name is Peggy Forster. I'm a marriage and family therapist. I'm a homeowner in Santa Monica and a property owner in Studio City, in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here today because I have two major concerns. One concern is for the health and safety of the families and young children who will be residing at the Playa Vista development. And my second concern is that city officials have unanimously agreed to pour millions of dollars into this dangerously unstable coastal marsh known as Biona Wetlands. The developers have already secured 78 million from the city and are now requesting an additional 10 million to complete the Fountain Park Apartments. My question is, why do they need this additional corporate welfare? And my answer may meet with some opposition, as well as, I hope, a great deal of agreement. I believe the Playa Vista developers have come face-to-face with major obstacles in constructing this megacity on contaminated soil in a high-risk liquefaction zone, which is known to exude dangerous levels of hydrogen sulfide and methane gas.
If I could ask you to conclude, please.
I shall. Thank you. It is only through the conscience of a large coalition of citizens and the diligence of the scientific community that this information has become public, prompting developers to spend millions of dollars in public relations in an attempt to conceal these hazards, and at the same time satisfy mitigation requirements. I personally found it chilling to observe at the Playa Vista Visitor Center an alarm device to alert the public whenever increased levels of methane gas are detected. The problem with this kind of inadequate so-called mitigation is that a power failure at any time could deactivate the system, and even a costly backup mechanism would be ineffective during any significant seismic activity. Other mitigation procedures consist of placing a costly synthetic membrane under the concrete foundations of the buildings. This is between the unstable sandstone shale, which is common to coastal wetlands. The shocking facts are, the city has accepted and even recommended these flimsy mitigation policies, even as objective credential professionals declare their opposition.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I really do appreciate this opportunity to address you.
Tom Ponton, to be followed by Dr. Suzanne de Beneditis.
Good afternoon, council members and President Fadilla. My name is Tom Ponton. I live in Mar Vista, several miles from the Fountain Park project, but close enough to be impacted by the traffic, the pollution, and the other adverse impacts on our community. I'm a director in the Mar Vista Neighborhood Association, and I'm one of many people working to organize the neighborhood council in my area. I want to publicly thank councilmembers Galanter and Ms. Akowski for attending our festival Saturday and being a part of the community. We do appreciate that. Today, I'm here speaking as an individual taxpayer and a Los Angeles voter. I feel community opposition to the Playa Vista project over the years has been largely ignored by this council or previous council. And I feel that, first of all, I'm grateful that I'm afforded this opportunity to speak, because I drove for an hour on that freeway this morning, just coming from Santa Monica. Probably some of you were on it, but I was hoping to speak at the committee meeting this morning. But I feel that tax-exempt multifamily housing bonds should be used in locations of our city, first of all, that are safer for its future inhabitants, and also in areas that are in need of renovation, and that are environment, and not in environmentally sensitive areas of our city. The Fountain Park Apartments are being built in the heart of the worst methane portion of the Biona Valley. According to this city's own website, if you go to the CLA report on this Biona project, the worst methane gas is virtually right under these apartments. This council has given $135 million in bond money already to the developers, and I think it's time to say no more. I think we've given them enough. As taxpayers, I, as a taxpayer, I consider this a real abuse of the voters' intentions relative to tax-exempt bond money. At the very least, I think a subsequent EIR should be done on the hazards of this project. If the developers are having to spend so much money on attempting to mitigate the methane gas and other gases, and money on PR campaigns to convince the people that it won't be a dangerous place to live, then I think they should spend their own money on whatever it is they need more for.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to hear me.
Thank you. Dr. Suzanne, to be followed by Michael St. Hill. While the doctor comes forward, let me repeat once again, for the public hearing for the Housing Committee, the Tefra Hearing is next Tuesday in room ten-ten of City Hall at ten a.m.
Honorable council members, I'm Dr. Suzanne de Beneditis, Ph.D. I come as a voice crying out for justice and fairness. Recently, I visited the proposed Fountain Park Apartments, and as I reviewed the pictures, the videos, et cetera, I wonder how the term "affordable" is defined. And so I'm here to implore you to use the justice and fairness principles in making your decisions, to allocate money that is much needed for lower, low-income housing in other safer parts of the city. We've already given Playa Vista over $78 million, and now they want another subsidy. There's something wrong with the picture, and it goes beyond that of teenagers asking for more and more money from their parents. The recent tragedies point out the issues involved. By the way, my Ph.D. is in social ethics from USC '78. Twenty years ago, people were protesting the annual arms bazaar held in Anaheim, where we sell all kinds of bombs and missiles to other nations and groups. The protesters were dismissed. Why? Because this was needed for business. Our economy needed the money. Only now is it coming to light that the two planes that were down last year, killing everyone abroad, all the Americans, maybe even some of your loved ones, were targets of sniper bombs, bombs made and sold in the USA. So the moral question before you is whether more money to this specific project is really good for the people you were elected to represent. Two points.
If I could ask you to wrap up, please.
One, I need not go into the details about the need for subsequent EIR. Dr. Kilborn from USC MD wrote a book, Chemical Brain Injury, pointing out the dangers of the hydrogen sulfide and other gases that are coming to light right in the Fountain Park area. Number two, both people and profit need respect, but you must show us which is your priority: corporate interests or the needs of those who elected you? As I look at their brochure, it's very gentrified. There's nothing but white, upper-middle-class pictures, so we know the audience to whom they're appealing. Why don't we take the Playa Vista group and work with them closely as a city to bring this money to the south-central area, East L.A., to Slosso Parter, the Crenshaw District, and bring this awesome type of housing where it should be put more safely? Thank you.
Mr. Michael St. Hill.
My name is Michael H. St. Hill. I don't want to be a complainer, but an informer. And as you notice, I am a negroid. I am happy with that term. You look around, some of the things I said on the card right there apply, still applies, and I have some complaints to hand into the city council. But if you look around the streets on the downtown area, and you see all of the toilets on the streets, I don't think anyone in any city would like to see, or any city you go to, and I've been to travel, see toilets on the, porta-potties on the streets. Maybe a formal bathroom, concrete and all that stuff, but not porta-potties. It looks so disrespectful. But you look at the streets downtown, and you find that 80% of the vagrants on the street are black. I am black, but it doesn't look good. It doesn't look good, because you, on several streets, you can walk, and they are not dealing, doing anything positive. There's drug activity, there's all kinds of lawbreaking going on. I think, I think it's imperative that the city council do something about that, or also do something about the urinating on the street where you can, I've never been to a street where you can just take your private part and urinate on the street. I think it's disrespectful. One more thing is that I do respect the Arabs of America and Palestinians, and I do believe that we should not denigrate the Palestinians or denigrate Arabs. And I think, I wholly, 100% unequivocally, support the Palestinians and Arabs in a fight for justice in America. It's unfortunate what happened in New York, but we must understand. Thank you very much. And I want to submit a, two reports of complaint.
We'll have the guards take them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. If I can ask one of the guards to take his cards. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next item, Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item number one is a required public hearing item, and it is a street lighting, three street lighting districts. There are ordinances on the file.
Okay. Item one is now before us. Notice for public hearing, I do not have cards for members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on item number one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items two through four are also public hearing items. I believe there is a card on item number two. Do you wish to call that special, or have the public hearing now and consider the items together?
Let's call the public hearing now, since it's only one card. Council calls forward Mike Mlickleton. Did I pronounce that even close? Is Mike here? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed for item number two. We have items two through four.
And these items should be, the public hearing should be closed and continued to October 17th. And there is also a report from the treasurer.
The public hearing is closed for items two through four, and those items shall be continued. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items five through seven are also public hearing items, and council should open the public hearings and continue the hearing in order to October 17th.
Okay. Items five through seven are before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on those items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed, and without objection, continue those items as well.
Next item, Mr. President, item number eight is a public hearing item. It's a public convenience or necessity, and that is in Council District Four. I need a motion from the floor to grant the application. I believe that's the recommendation on the agenda.
Item number eight before us, do not have requests from members of the public to speak. So public hearing is open and closed on this item. Recommendation is to, Madam Clerk, to approve...
I'm sorry, to grant the application and make the findings that this does have public convenience or necessity.
Members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on granting approval. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number nine is also a public convenience or necessity, and that is in Council District 13. A motion is required to, I believe the recommendation is to grant the application.
And I do have several items on number nine. Let's call that special. Next item.
Okay. Next items, Mr. President, items 12 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 12 through 19, colleagues, public hearings have been held. Any specials? 12 through 19. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 12 through 19. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those items are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 51. I understand on item number 38, Mr. Reyes has a technical amendment, a verbal amendment to make on that item.
We also have cards on 38. Let's call it special.
Okay. And also, I understand that Councilmember Zine wishes to call 42, 43, 44, and 50 special.
42, 43, 44, and which other?
And item 50. And also, Mr. Weiss wishes to call 46.
Mr. Weiss calls 46 special. 38 is special. Any other specials? Colleagues, any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Going back, excuse me, Mr. President, you wish to hold the closed-session items on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk.
Next items, Mr. President, going back to items called special. Item number nine was called special, inasmuch as there's cards from the public on the items.
Item number nine is now before us, colleagues. Council calls forward Sheila Hollencheck, to be followed by Scott Shuttleworth.
Hi, I'm Sheila Hollencheck, and I represent Gilmore Associates. I would like you to vote for this ABC permit. I also have, we represent the property 6253 Hollywood Boulevard, where this establishment will be housed. This is a redevelopment area where, right next door to the Pantages Theater, where The Lion King has been so successful. Lion King has been so successful for the last year. We also are working with our property owners on, in the immediate area to bring popular venues, to bring people to Hollywood, to enjoy their time, spend money, and stay in Hollywood a little bit longer than they normally do. I have two letters of support from other property owners in Hollywood that I'd like to submit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Shuttleworth, to be followed by Danell Dadigan.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Scott Shuttleworth. I'm the managing partner of this project, and we're glad to be part of this redevelopment project and look forward and going to do our part to help with encouraging tourism to return to the area and operate a great venue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Danell Dadigan, to be followed by Ray Whitmer.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Danell Dadigan, and I'm the owner of the Max Factor Building in Hollywood. I have come here today to pledge my support for issuance of an ABC liquor license to the Ultra Lounge at the intersection of Hollywood and Vine. We need many different venues to help the locals as well as the tourists to enjoy Hollywood Boulevard. We have worked very hard to be able to bring Hollywood back to what everyone remembers it to be. And with the issuance of this liquor license and the opening of the Ultra Lounge, this will be one more element in our equation to make Hollywood Boulevard's revitalization successful. So I urge you all to please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe Mr. Ray Whitmer would share on a different item. Council calls forward Margaret Taylor. I see you know her, she's available to answer questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Margaret Taylor of Valley Taylor Associates. We're representing the applicant and have handled the application to the zoning administrative through the conditional use permit process. I would also like to state that we have worked with the Hollywood Vice Unit in coordinating security plans, not only for this venue, but for everything that is occurring along Hollywood Boulevard, to make sure that they are efficiently and effectively operated and maintained through this liquor license. We believe it's going to be a favorable complement to the mixture of uses along Hollywood Boulevard, and is being done in conjunction with redevelopment plans and goals and objectives that the city has administered for this area. We greatly appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you very much. And this concludes the public comments for this item. Now it's time for council discussion. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, I rise in support of this, and I do want the members of the public in Hollywood to know that my office is putting together a policy to make sure that we don't just blanket approve all liquor licenses, that we have some conditions, especially where there's stores and residential areas. But I am rising in support of this. Many of you, or some of you, or maybe one of you may know that the Ultra Lounge series is a record series put out by Capitol Records, and this, which is just up the street, really draws on the success of that series to have kind of a themed destination that I think is good not only for tourists but for indigenous folks, so I urge your passage.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 38 called special, cards from the public, and also for an amending motion.
Item 38 is now before us, colleagues. Council calls forward Bill Cochrane, to be followed by Sandra Genis.
Mr. Cochrane was unable to stay. He did submit a letter which he gave to the clerk, a written statement. He was emphasizing the lack of SEA, the fact that you can't rely on the county's SEA programs for biological resource conservation, inasmuch as they do concentrate on unincorporated areas. And I am Sandra Genis. I am here on behalf of the Los Angeles Livability Coalition, and we had previously presented numerous letters through the Plum Process. And essentially, our concerns are that you are really missing some opportunities to have some meaningful policies in your conservation element. And we had suggested additional policies regarding archaeology, culture and history, endangered species, water quality erosion, fisheries forests, habitats, habitats and scenic areas. For example, scenic areas, billboards are a huge issue for the city. The conservation element doesn't even talk about them. It doesn't talk about unique landforms. We had policies suggested regarding ocean and resource management. Right now, in the planning sphere, there are numerous programs that are very forward-thinking regarding sustainable development. We see a complete lack of that in the conservation element. Further, we are also concerned about the negative declaration. Certain policies that were in your old conservation element, which were somewhat helpful, have since been deleted. And as a matter of fact, unless one goes back, you don't see that. There is no good project description in your negative declaration for this proposed project.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
Excuse me?
If I can ask you to conclude.
Oh, okay. And, well, that pretty much does it. And so we request that you consider this further and/or add a sustainability element to the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item 38. Members wishing to speak? Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, I just rise to make a technical correction on the report in order to complete this process. And I'd like the correction to be as follows, for recommendation number three. And that is, proposed by the Planning Department in its August 27, 2001 report to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, attached to council file. That's the only technical correction I'd like to make on this report.
Thank you very much. It is a technical correction to item 38. Item 38 is as corrected. Now before us, colleagues. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
38 as corrected is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 42 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Before going on to item 42, I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move at this time to reconsider the vote on item 17. There was a technical amendment that was supposed to wend its way through the process before we took that vote, which I'd like to offer after the motion for reconsideration. It's on everybody's desk right now.
Okay, colleagues, request to reconsider item 17. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 17 is now back before us. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd offer the amendment that's marked 17A, which, as I say, is a technical amendment to, it basically is in the city's favor, a sum of $100,000, and I'd move that and ask for everyone's support.
Okay. Item 17 as amended is before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item 17 as amended is approved. Back to item 42. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This measure concerns 447 Los Angeles City municipal employees, 271 of those LAPD officers, and 18 Los Angeles City firefighters. This measure will provide compensation for our city employees who are called into active service due to the call-up of reserves by the President of the United States. What the measure will do is provide balanced compensation from the military pay to their city pay, as well as the benefit package. So they will remain whole, and their families will be able to receive the compensation, to pay the mortgage, car payment, put food on the tables, pay the tuition for the students, et cetera. My colleague, Councilman Pacheco, came up with a modified plan, which I will defer to him. And if this meets city attorney approval, I would not have any objection. And I don't, Councilmember Wax isn't here, who also offered this with me, to see if that would fit the guidelines and the requirements. And I'll defer now to Councilmember Pacheco.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, as we know, all of our reserves are being called to duty, and during this time, a sacrifice, everyone is asked to give a little. Mr. Zine is on the right track when we talk about our city employees and making sure that, as a family, as a city family, who supports our employees and their call to duty, we want to make sure that their households remain whole and that we don't in any way jeopardize those families, their children. And so, Mr. Zine's recommendation, which I concur with, is that we continue their current rate of pay, even though the military may be paying them less than their current pay position here in the city. And my suggestion was that, in order to facilitate and make this efficient, we follow a system that I was exposed to in the DA's office when I went on jury duty. When I was on jury duty, I kept my salary, was on pay, and every check I got from the jury duty, I signed over back to the county. So I would make a friendly amendment that we maintain these people on our payrolls, and that we ask them to sign over their military pay, because it's the same net effect. We're going to be covering that gap between what they get paid in the military and what their normal salary would be. That's the sacrifice that we are making as a city to support the president's call to be repaired, and our reserve is being called to duty. So I would simply ask that we instruct the CAO to, in first position, try to achieve that system, because I believe it would be more efficient and less burdensome on the administrative staff. But if there's some legal impediment or some legal issues, then we would go with Mr. Zine's proposal, that we pay that gap, that difference. I just think that would be much easier to maintain that constant direct deposit for the families that participate than to have to deal with this administrative catch-up after the fact. So I would just simply move that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Zine.
Request that the city attorney expedite that as quickly as possible, so there is no loss of compensation for those, because some have already been called into active duty.
Mr. Brown has drafted an ordinance which he transmitted, but if it has to be amended by the motion, if council adopts a motion to amend it, then we'd have to go back, and he can bring it back.
Will that take a long period of time?
It shouldn't take that long period of time. I don't think, from what I'm hearing, that this necessarily should be a problem, but we'd have to look at it. It shouldn't take that long.
Because what we want to make sure is that, as they leave, they're always two weeks behind in their pay, that there's no interruption, and whether, whichever program works, that that family remain whole with the compensation, the benefits. So whichever way we can expedite that, and Councilman Pacheco's plan seems a lot easier for the city, for the bookkeeping, for the personnel to just sign the check over, and then to remain on the current salary, the current schedule, with direct deposit or whatever. But we'd like to get this done, so there's no gap in the timeframe for these employees, for their families to suffer.
Well, I can speak from the legal standpoint, and we certainly can work on it, but I would need the input from Personnel and Controllers Office in terms of this gap issue. That's not a legal issue, so I'd like to have their input on that also.
Okay.
In terms of how best the compensation go.
Okay, so we should continue. Is Friday enough time, or do you need longer?
We can go to next Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, excuse me. Right. That should be enough time.
So technically, we will continue this item until Tuesday. I believe the staff is clear on the intent or the desire of the council, but we'll leave it to you to work with Personnel, especially whoever's doing the payroll, to figure out what the best way is to do this.
And I acknowledge Councilman Wax, who introduced this, a number of strategic missions in the past, and that's when this first came about. And now with Councilmember Pacheco's amendment, it seems to be maybe less cumbersome for the city to figure this gap, and then to just get the checks back from those that go into military duty. But we want to expedite that, and I don't think there's going to be any opposition from this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. With all that being said, this item is continued until next Tuesday. Madam Clerk.
Item number 43 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine. Item 43.
With my colleagues' support, I'd like to push this and 44, and I think an amendment that came forward, I don't know what number it is, 44A, push this all to Friday, if that would be acceptable.
Mr. President, members, I'm going to ask a no vote on consideration, a no vote on consideration of item 43 and 44.
For both items 43 and 44?
Mr. Thomas? No.
Mr. Holden calls for consideration, since these motions are Rule 16. 10 votes are required. Is everybody clear on what we're doing here? Items 43 and 44 are on the agenda. They are Rule 16 motions introduced last week. By being Rule 16, council rules allow for a call for a vote to consider the items, since they have not gone to committee and there's no committee reports. We require 10 votes to consider the items today. So we will call, we will open the roll on consideration of these items. If there are 10 votes or more to consider them, then they will be before us, and we can discuss, debate, and possibly act on them. Short of 10 votes, short of 10 votes, we can't act on the items until they're before us. Mr. Holden has called for a vote on consideration of the items. So, Madam Clerk, if there's less than 10 votes, then what happens to the items?
These items would then be referred to, under Rule 16, to the committee, the appropriate committee.
Okay. Is everybody clear? So, for both items 43 and 44, unless there's a desire to vote separately on the two items, we'll take them both. Mr. Reyes, do you wish to speak on consideration?
Yes, I just wanted some clarification. Do we need to consider it first before we ask to have it continued? I just want to know the logistics of it.
Yes. Vote for consideration precedes a motion for continuation.
Formation, Mr. President.
Mr. Pacheco.
If the procedural process is that it would go to committee, would that make the motion, which has a due date of October 1, obsolete and moot? And therefore, why not just withdraw it? I mean, if it's going to committee for another week...
That's a very good point.
I mean, just withdraw it.
Right. Well, the October 1 date referenced in one of the motions is not effective, because the motion has not been acted on.
Right. But the maker wants it by October 1, according to the motion, and going to committee puts it past October 1.
I'd encourage you to speak with the author of that motion.
Precisely. It's the prerogative of the author as to whether it will be withdrawn or not. And it seems to me that it's appropriate to proceed with consideration at this point, then the persons can vote yea or nay with respect to whether we do so.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on consideration?
I'm sorry. Just, I just couldn't understand that last part. Was that you want to consider it as the maker of the motion, or you do not want to consider it?
Mr. Pacheco, simply vote as I do.
All right.
Watch me closely.
Mr., I can't, let me see.
I'm reaching to press a button here.
All right.
And it's red. It's red.
If only the world was adding...
We'll see which one. Right.
So seeing no further questions or comments on consideration of items 43 and 44, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll.
Two ayes, nine no's.
Those items are not going to be considered today and are sent to committee. Public Safety Committee. Next item.
Item 44, excuse me. Item 46 called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is, this is a motion that would set forth a threat preparedness task force, so the city can finally begin a comprehensive and coordinated examination of all city policies that are unfortunately made relevant by the events of last September 11. And in particular, it's a task force that will look at three items. Number one is security measures, target hardening, securing public facilities and the like. The second is city's response capabilities in the event of catastrophe, and the third is the city's processes. Part of what we'll do will be evaluate how the city performed on September 11, but part of it will look at whether we can improve the processes that are presently in place. I would like to make two technical amendments, which have been discussed with the directors of the EPD and the CAO. The first is, I'd like the director of the EPD and the CAO to jointly coordinate this task force. That's something that we've all talked about and agreed upon. The CAO is going to provide staffing for this as well. And the second thing is to make the report backdate... And the second thing is to make the report backdate 45 days instead of 30 days so we can really get a good comprehensive look at this while at the same time ensuring that we approach the subject with the proper urgency. Unless anyone has any questions, I would, I'd move it.
Mr. Weiss, thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, I would ask for clarification, Mr. Weiss, because the general understanding, when not stipulated in your motion, the council member to serve on the task force, how shall that be determined?
It's my intent that that member be appointed by the president of the council.
Okay, that's usually the way things are done when special task forces are created. Just wanted to make sure that was clarified before we took action on the items.
Yes.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 50, call special vice councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item 50 is before us.
I remove my special on that.
Okay, his questions have been answered. Any other questions or comments on item 50? Mr. Holden?
No, 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 another item. When you finish with this, Mr. President, I'm going to respectfully make a request.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 50. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Item 50 is approved.
Mr. Holden, respectfully requested item 40 go forthwith?
Sure. Forthwith on item 40.
Thank you, sir.
41 and 45 as well, those items forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, are the closed session items. I understand on one of the closed sessions, 54F, there's a request from the city attorney to continue that Tuesday, October 2nd.
Request for continuance, colleagues, without objection.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's clear the desk.
You have motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
And there are no excuses on the desk, council. The desk is clear to go into closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. This, in conformance with California code, the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guard to please clear the chambers.
[inaudible]
Item number 52A is settlement in the amount of $147,000 in the case of Cotler versus City of Los Angeles.
All right, Ms. Sikowsky moves and Ms. Hahn seconds. Please open the roll on that matter. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 52D is settlement in the case of Michael Justin versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $206,000.
All right, it's before us. Mr. Pacheco moves, Mr. Garcetti seconds. Please open the roll on those items. I'll close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All righty. Madam Clerk.
Item 52E is settlement in the case of Al Crespo versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $60,000.
All right, Ms. Sikowsky moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 52G is settlement in the case of Alexander versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $402,356.24.
All right, it's before us. Ms. Perry moves and Mr. Reyes seconds. Please open the roll. If you would, close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
None ayes, one no.
All right. Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
All right, what next do we have to contend with?
The desk is clear.
All right, are there any motions for posting or referral? Are we prepared for adjournment now?
The desk has been cleared for motions.
All right. Any adjourning motions?
I have one.
We recognize the council member from the 15th District, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I stand today in memory of one of the greatest legends in the community of San Pedro, Mr. Ante Perkov, who died yesterday at the age of 77. Ante's restaurant has been the hub of social life for San Pedro, for the greater harbor community, and for many people throughout the city of Los Angeles and the local region for years. Since 1946, Mr. Perkov, with his trademark red carnation tucked behind his right ear, has greeted thousands of customers, mostly by name. Born in Croatia in 1924, Ante left his homeland on Christmas Day at the age of 14, finally settling in San Pedro in 1941. He worked as a dishwasher for $2.50 a day, and when an immigration sweep landed him locked up on Terminal Island, he negotiated a deal for his release by volunteering to serve in the Army and then later returned to San Pedro. He opened Ante's restaurant in 1951, and it has become a San Pedro landmark. He's been involved in the Salvation Army, the Boy Scouts, the San Pedro Elks Lodge, the Lions Club, and Toberman Settlement House. And through his restaurant, he raised funds for the American Red Cross, the San Pedro High School Boosters, the YMCA, and numerous churches. And on many times, Ante fed hungry people who appeared unannounced at his restaurant door. In 1954, Ante became a U.S. citizen, a milestone in his life. I quote Ante himself, "I always feel I owed everything to this country. I don't know how I'm going to pay it back. The only thing I can think of is to work for my community." Ante was preceded in death by his wife, Minnie, in 1988, and he is survived by his three sons, Tony Jr., Marion, and Vincent. Mr. President, colleagues, it is a sad day for San Pedro community. We have truly lost a legend.
Thank you. From the 10th District, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, Mr. James Dickerson, who passed away August 26th, was a member of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission from 1990 to 1997. Nice guy, I started with him. Mr. Dickerson was 79 years old at the time of his passing. He spent his entire life, entire career, with the New Hall Company, which he joined in 1951 and remained on the board until 1995. As head of the New Hall Land and Farming, he helped expand its focus from cattle farming to condominiums. He was the prime force in developing Valencia, the planned community northwest of Los Angeles. Memorial Services will be Saturday, the 29th, Church of Our Savior, 535 West Roses Road, San Gabriel. Leaves his wife, Linda, one daughter, three sons and grandchildren. He's a good guy on the Coliseum Commission. And also, Thomas Bibbs. Bibbs was a laborer, a longtime trending supporter. He was about 87. Didn't look that old during, he didn't look that young in the time of his birth week. He was a retired field representative for Laborers Union Local 300. He joined the union during the 1950s and became a member of the union board in 1960. Mr. Bibbs was very politically active and lent his entire time and energy to my campaign and other campaigns, as well as those of Congresswoman Maxine Waters and others. Devoted member of the Bethel AME Church, survived. Services will be the 29th, September 29th, AME Church, 79th, and Western, 10 a.m. Internment and remediating following at the Rose Hill, Woodya. His wife preceded him in death, name is Valerie, one daughter, one son, grandchildren and other relatives. So Bibbs is going to be really missed as well. He's a good guy.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members? May I then ask that you join me in acknowledging the passing of Commissioner Maggie Hathaway, who is affectionately known as the godmother of golf in Los Angeles County for decades. She spent her time knocking down barriers in Southern California, fighting for minority children who wanted to play golf. In March of 2000, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors decided to name the Jack Thompson Golf Course after Maggie Hathaway. Later in that same year, the City Council of Los Angeles named the putting greens at the Jim Gilliam Park in honor of Maggie Hathaway. I think it's appropriate that all members join in mourning the passing of Maggie Hathaway, and Mr. Holden wishes to be a co-presenter on that. Sir?
Just have to know Maggie Hathaway to have known her. She was very active in the community, and more importantly, she cared so much about the young people. And she was always in the supervisor's office saying what he could do about those golf courses down there and teach those youngsters how to play golf. And she said she probably knew Tiger Woods better than his parents because she worked with him. I mean, I got to tell you, Maggie gave all she could give in order to inspire the young people...
That's right.
...to become active in the playing golf, long before the people today we know who are important in that sport. And she was writing a book about the supervisor, and she asked me for some comments. I don't know if the book ever got published, but she, she's contributed significantly during her lifetime to help all of us in the South Central area. And I'm shocked by her passing. Certainly, she's going to be missed for sure, her voice speaking out on behalf of those who are deprived and denied. So I gladly join you in seconding that motion.
And also, Ms. Hahn. It should be noted that she gave a demonstration on golfing to those youngsters at the Jim Gilliam Park. The only one that failed to be adequately educated was the councilperson for that district as he could not get his swing in gear, and she made note of that. Sir?
Announce me here. Maurice Anderson Dawkins. We passed away September 24th, the father of Maurice Dawkins, a longtime city employee as a manager analyst, management analyst for the city fire department. Mr. Dawkins was 80 years old at the time of his death, began his career as a minister in New York, and spent time here in California as pastor at the People's Independent Church of Christ from 1955 to 65 in the 9th District. He was active in both the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and the local NWACP, among other organizations which he served. Services are pending. His wife, Joan Wallace, doctor, and also one daughter, Susan Dawkins, son Maurice, grandchild, and other relatives.
And one final adjourning motion for Doris Landry, the mother of Deanne Morris, who heads the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Landry was a 50-year resident of the 8th Council District. She is survived by her husband, Gordon, and four children. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you, we are now adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Mr. Holden moves to continue until Wednesday. Mr. Zine. Ms. Sikowsky. Then without objection, item 11 is continued.
Until September 26th.
Next item, please.
Item number 26, call special vice councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Holden, for this resolution which declares the week of September 18th to 24th as Pollution Prevention Week in the city of Los Angeles. I wanted to add, if possible, a friendly amendment to this, that for the next year that this is done, this was just the past week, I believe, in terms of the date, that we instruct the city clerk to double-side all the reports that we get. As I understand, I was going to add this amendment as something to encourage this new policy, but I've been informed that we have a policy right now that all transmittals, all copies that are made should be already double-sided. This may seem like a small thing, but when we see the volumes of paper that comes across our desks, we really need to make that effort to bring into compliance. I mistakenly thought this was for a future week, but I'm seeing that this is this past week. So actually, why don't we add a friendly amendment instead of for next year, that for next week, we try to comply with that for one week?
Add for one week that we try to get double-sided copies from the clerks for everything we get. Okay? Good?
So Mr. Garcetti has a motion as an amendment. Mr. Willie Thomas, second. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Mr. Garcetti's motion. Doesn't seem to be any objection, let's take a vote on the entire matter with the changes offered by Mr. Garcetti. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 29 is being held on the desk. There are members of the public wishes to speak.
Okay, item 29, Ms. Cynthia Cooper has submitted a speaker card. We call her forward at this time.
I'm going to go to the middle table also.
Okay.
I'm going to introduce some additional language on this because I think we've reached a resolution.
Okay, we can call the department forward while we hear from Ms. Cooper.
Yes, good morning, and thank you to the honor councilmembers for hearing our motion here today. We're contesting the, or actually, we're filing a protest and objection to the assessment for that property located at 1215 West 41st Street for the fencing and barricading, the amount that was assessed. The problem is, I'm representing my client here today, Tony Boone, who was a private attorney for the legal owner, that being James Reynolds. The problem is, is that Mr. Reynolds entered into a contract specifically with ABZ Construction Company, and they were supposed to, within the scope of that contract, they were supposed to have necessitated all repairs, including the barricading and fencing. They failed to perform their services. During an arbitration hearing, my client had to pay them an amount in excess of $13,000 for work that they never performed, and it is his opinion that ABZ Construction Company should be penalized for the assessment of the fencing and barricading based on the fact that they entered into a contract to perform that work, and they did not.
Okay, thank you, and I do believe we have further response from staff and the council member of the district.
I'd like for the department to speak.
This concludes the public hearing on this item. Call on Ms. Perry and begin with a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mr. President, the Department of Building Safety has no problem with a waiver of the 40% administrative cost due to the...
has no problem with a waiver of the 40% administrative cost due to the problems that the owner-of-record had with their contractor.
All right, and the department and the representative, Ms. Cooper, for her client who's here behind her today, all right, they've reached an understanding, and I'd like to put this into the record, that the department has agreed that due to the fact that the owner-of-record for this property was unjustly charged for work which was not done by the private contractor, they have agreed that 40% or the administrative costs associated with this action, which amounts to $2,974.37, be waived, and I believe there's some additional points about an installment arrangement. Am I correct?
Well, that would be handled by the Department of Public Works once council has confirmed the assessment.
Okay. All right, so then we'll work on that issue through the Department of Public Works, and that'll be a condition of this resolution. Is there anything else?
No, there's nothing else from me.
So we'll adopt your language as a friendly amendment to the resolution.
And we should probably refer this to the Public Works Committee to finalize the issue of the installment repayment plan.
So you don't wish to take action today, we'll refer the item as amended to Public Works Committee?
Yes, forthwith, so we can resolve this quickly.
Okay, and this matter is therefore referred to Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Without objection. Ms. Clerk, next item.
A point of confusion, is the assessment being passed today, you just want to refer the assessment and the entire question to the committee, correct?
Correct. No action today by the council. We will refer it back to committee, along with the added language offered by Ms. Perry.
Okay. Mr. President, the only item left for the regular agenda is public comment. Did you wish to go into the special agenda at this time?
Yes, we have a one-item special agenda, I believe.
Yes. First item is to call the roll. Burton, Glanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Skakowsky, Pacheco, Reyes, Perry, Ridley-Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla. There's 11 members present and a quorum.
Thank you. That brings us to the agenda of the special meeting. We will reconvene back to the regular meeting in a minute. We have a one-item special agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Before you is a committee report from the Rules Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee and a resolution.
So a public hearing has been held in committee. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, my rise in support of this motion to support SB 25, which is the domestic partnerships legislation before the governor right now. Just to let you know what, sorry, it's AB 25 would do. Allow domestic partners to relocate with a domestic partner without losing their unemployment benefits, to use sick leave to care for a family member, to file disability benefits on behalf of an incapacitated partner, to provide partners with employer-based health coverage, to be exempt from state income tax, the health benefits provided to domestic partners, make a medical decision, as we know, for partners who sometimes are excluded from visiting folks in the hospital who might be there for whatever reason, to act as a conservator, sue for wrongful death, administer partners a state, and register as domestic partners if one or both of the partners are over the age of 62. And a lot of people look at domestic partnerships as just something for the gay and lesbian community. It's actually, the highest number of domestic partners that we have in this state are elderly folks. This expands the rights of all folks, regardless of sexuality or age, and being able to cohabitate and to have certain rights that the rest of Californians enjoy. So I urge you all to support this. The governor has indicated that this year he will sign this, and it'll make us have the strongest domestic partnership in the country outside of Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved, and we shall send that forthwith to the mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, there is one closed session item, item number 31. Did you wish to recess the special meeting and go back into the regular meeting for public comment?
Let's recess the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting agenda. Before we go to public comment, the chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I ask for reconsideration of item 9. I made the motion at the very end, the note and file, and that was not the intent of the committee as relates to this item on the congestion management program. They just want to adopt a coming resolution, and I saw a move, and then after that, make it forthwith, because it has to go to MTA.
Mr. Holden calls for reconsideration of item 9. Please open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item 9 is reconsidered, and now before us, Mr. Holden moves a committee report. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Forthwith to the mayor, and thank you for straightening that out, Mr. Holden. That leads us now to the public comment period for today's meeting. Opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Mr. Morton Allen.
Good morning. I've come before you to bring this up, because I consider you all my friends. The whole country has come together. Democrats are kissing Republicans. Everybody's on the streets getting together, and I really think that we kind of overlook something. I think that our great body should invite the Valley leaders, the people that have been questioning things in government, bring them all together down here for a candlelight vigil, and get everybody united together. I think that the time is perfect. It's working every place else in the country. I think that these people, I will tell you, if you were to see what's going on in the Valley, I would say within 15 minutes after the event happened, I got a call from my friend Dennis Zine, and he said, "Can I get the billboard companies to put up American flags all over the city?" I called my college buddies that own Clear Channel in Texas, and I said, "I need a favor." And they said, "You always want a favor." I said, "No." I said, "You got a lot of billboards coming down, don't you?" And they said, "Yes." They're taking down, every billboard in the city that had a violent movie on it has come down. All the airline billboards have come down. And I said, "How many empty big ones do you have?" He said, "200." I said, "Could you go and put an American flag up on everyone, just for unity in the city?" And he said, "Yes." In fact, I brought around pictures of it, so you could all see, but the first one's supposed to be going up to air tomorrow across the street, and they're going up all over the city. And so I called Dennis last Friday, and I said, "Okay, I got the billboards. You owe me a dinner, cheapskate." So he came out to Studio City last Friday evening about 8:30, and you would not have believed it. There were at least 4,000 people on Ventura Boulevard that were marching with candles from Laurel Canyon to Van Nuys Boulevard. It was so jammed, we couldn't get in there. We went over to a little neighborhood restaurant, Casa Vega, and I'm going to tell you, Dennis, would you say there was 800 people in there? All with American flags, all drinking, partying, saying, "We're united as one." So I don't know how you want to do it, but I really believe the timing is right, and I think that there's a way to just intimidate this, to get rid of this whole dirty word of secession. So I just want to suggest that. Okay?
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Mr. Zine.
I just want to thank Clear Channel for donating those billboards, which will be going up throughout the City of Los Angeles and encouraging everyone to fly a great American flag.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, currently before you is item number 31, which is a closed session item.
In conformance with California code, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Guards, please clear the chambers.
Did you wish to clear the desk in the meantime?
In the meantime, let's clear the desk.
Motion for posting a referral?
Those motions are posted and referred.
Councilmember Zine requests a excuse from council attendance on Friday, October 26th and November 16th at 11:00 AM. For city business, both meet policy.
Mr. Zine is excused?
The desk is clear, so for item 31.
Okay, we now go to executive session.
Mr. President, item number 31 is before you. It's a recommendation of the city attorney to settle this case in the amount of $125,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That item is approved. Let's send that forthwith. Next item, please.
The desk is clear.
Adjourning motions, please arise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask us today to adjourn in the memory of Ronald Gamboa, Daniel Branhurst, and their three-year-old son, David. They died on the hijacked United Flight 175 from Boston to Los Angeles. The two of them had a 14-year relationship. They are founding members of LA's Pop Luck Club, a support organization for gay dads and their children. They are a major supporter of the Family Pride Coalition, a national gay and lesbian family organization. Mr. Branhurst was an attorney, a partner at Price Waterhouse Coopers. Mr. Gamboa managed the Santa Monica Gap store. They are both residents of Hollywood Hills. They're survived by their large extended families. And just one other note, it seems that one or both of them were involved in the heroics to try to successfully prevent that flight from slamming into any populated area. And when you hear the comments of folks like Jerry Falwell talking about the responsibility for these things, and you actually see two gay fathers who are heroes, especially when we're talking today about AB 25, it really drives home how much all of us are Americans, and that heroes come in every form. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss wishes to second. All members.
Those are tough guys.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of a young individual, Damon Munies. Damon was a student at Slijan High School. He was diagnosed with leukemia and passed away on September 19th. He fought his illness with grace, and even when he was diagnosed with the illness, he requested that, even though he couldn't attend school, that he be still kept on the school rolls because of his strong pride in being a Slijan High School student. He really believed that he was going to overcome this illness and someday return to school. He's survived by his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Ramon and Maria Munies, his sister Juana Munies, his aunts, uncles, and cousins. Obviously, the Slijan High School student body is missing one of theirs, and Dolores Mission Church.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning today in the memory of Mark Dana Chesler, who died on Thursday, September 13th, this year of leukemia. He was 51 years old, and he was a scriptwriter for 10 years, but then he decided to change his course in life and decided to become an acupuncturist. That was based on his desire to do more for humanity by alleviating the pain and suffering of other people. He was also an herbologist, and he was very successful in helping people in this field. He leaves behind his parents, Eunice and Henry Chesler. He was the father of Galen Chesler Gold, and the brother of Janet Chesler Johnson.
Ms. Perry wishes to second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.